The meeting.
No, I got the other meeting.
Okay.
What meeting is?
The town administrator search committee is meeting in the other.
It's after seven thirty. Looks like we're missing our.
Ken Daly's not coming.
He isn't?
No, he can't make it tonight.
Three of us make it.
Well, there's four of us.
Four of us, that's right, four of us.
Alright, so let's call this meeting a daughter at six ten. Let me start this. Nine, six, right. What a day. Are we on, oh, we are on, boy, that's great, get the, uh, the big board, this is as close as we can come to Patriots and St. Louis Park and everything.
Jumbotron.
The jumbotron, that's what it is, that's what it is. Well, you've met Tom, Tom Robinson.
We're digitally recorded. Craig, Craig, he.
Craig Bosino.
I haven't seen you guys in forever.
I know. We're, uh.
A while there, it's like every day.
I know, we had a big ma- we had a big decision to make in August, we meet, we met five times in the first two weeks. But anyways, well, we're pleased you could make it with us this evening. And we are being digitally recorded and live from Hubbardston. So, I will, uh, welcome you again and explain that you're here because we have the master plan under development and you will be assisting, as I understand it, in our economic development chapter of that master plan, which is proceeding actually better than we thought it would be, it always takes time. And the background, I guess, is that the town of Hubbardston's been very concerned about economic development forever. I don't know if you were aware of the fact that we did have a, an ad hoc committee for economic development that was formed about a year and a half ago. It met several times, but has not met in over a year, or just about a year, the year November.
Met about, uh, no, met in, uh, January, I think.
January, okay. And it, uh, discussed quite a few issues that everybody was concerned with. And unfortunately, never came to a lot of conclusions, but, uh, we are aware of almost everything that, you know, is potentially possible for Hubbardston and there are some, some hopes and dreams, I guess, that go along with that because economic development seems to be the idea that will help us somehow, some way, and I guess if you have anything that can enlighten us, we'd be happy to listen to it. I don't know if that helps with what we've done in Hockland, but that's about where we are.
I do have a, a handout and, um, basically what it is, uh, it's an assessment of your current economic base. And, uh, the handout, uh, hit some highlights, like how many establishments do you have in the community? What's the unemployment rate? What was the unemployment rate ten years ago? Uh, educational attainment, uh, things like that, I've been doing some research over the last month and, uh, like to go through that if I could, and if, uh, you have a few moments.
Oh, you, you have the ball, absolutely.
And, uh, tha- that's what I was gonna go through tonight, then we can, um, we're, we can talk a little bit about economic development and different aspects, what you might be interested in, and, uh, I, I, I believe we're gonna need to have, uh, another meeting or a minimum of like one to two meetings, uh, cause the next meeting, uh, we, I could come up with a, a very rough draft, uh, recommendations, uh, section and goals and objectives for economic development, but that would just be for discussion purposes. Cause, uh, you know your community, uh, better than, uh, anybody else because you live here. And, uh, it would be up to you, uh, which ones you thought might work in Hubbardston and what might not work in Hubbardston, and we could scratch the ones that, that, uh, that you didn't think would be appropriate for your community, uh, the next meeting. Uh, but tonight I was just gonna go through, so I was saying the, um, your economic base, uh, just, it's like a snapshot of what you've got today.
Great, thank you.
Here we go.
If I could just ask a question before we start.
Sure. Thank you.
This was a grant, right?
Right, I, I did a D L T grant from the Mont梭uset Regional Planning to.
Break me in on what those letters mean.
I don't know what they mean.
D L T A, District Local Technical Assistance Program.
Oh, the next page.
Page two.
Okay, D L T, that's not my best.
What I was gonna do is give, I can give a little bit, bit of background.
That'd be great.
Yeah, well, what I'm interested in is how much money do we have for your portion of the work? And how much money has been spent to date? And what you think we can accomplish with what's left over?
Yeah.
Somewhere in here, weave it in somewhere.
Okay, absolutely. Uh, if we go to page two, uh, it's called District Local Technical Assistance Program. And, uh, I work for Mont梭uset Regional Planning Commission and over the last ten years, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has provided us with about two hundred thousand dollars, uh, each year to assist communities on eligible projects. Eligible projects, uh, would be economic development, of course, the state promotes that. Uh, housing, uh, is another, uh, element that, uh, the, the state, uh, would support. We've also worked on transportation, uh, master plan elements for communities too, under this program. Now, we have two hundred thousand dollars that we re- we received in the winter and we've got probably about twelve or thirteen, uh, projects, uh, going on, uh, cause we put out a request for service delivery and, uh, Tom put, put it together and it was signed by the Board of Selectmen and it was to work on your, uh, economic development element. And I think that it's, uh, about, it might be about, uh, twelve thousand dollars in staff time. It's, so it's not technically a grant, uh, but it's, uh, sta- i- it pays me, uh, to work, uh, on your economic development element.
For us.
For, for you.
Oh, great.
Yep, yep, so you have the resources of, uh, M R P C, uh, including, uh, G I S, if there's any G I S involved in putting this chapter together, and it doesn't cost the town or anything, so, so that's the nice thing about this program. All the funding comes for, from, uh, the state, so that's the background there. And it appears as though we are going to get funds again, it looks quite promising. Uh, and we'll put out another request for service delivery if that is indeed the case in probably November, December. And, uh, I was talking with, uh, Tom a little bit before the meeting, uh, I indicated that we have worked on transportation plans before. If we skip page four, these are a list of all the chapters. So, we have the goals and policy statement that you need in the master plan, you have housing, which you've already accomplished, which is fantastic, transportation, we do work on transportation plans, we have a transportation staff, at M R P C, I think we have five or six transportation planners, uh, working full time. Economic development, uh, which we've initiated, uh, historic and natural resources, uh.
You can get that, the, D L T for that as well?
Y- you might, I would have to talk to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Okay.
But I know that you, you can for transportation because we've done that for other communities before. Uh, open space, which you have your open space plan just about done, so you're in pretty good shape right there. In community services or services and facilities, that might be eligible under D L T A also, I could ask Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Uh, a land use plan, that, that is eligible under D L T A, but, uh, the issue is you should probably do that element, uh, last, uh, because it touches upon each of the other elements. It has to do with housing, it has to do with economic development, uh, natural and cultural resources and transportation, so you might wanna tackle that one last, uh, or actually the implementation plan is last, but the land use plan is, uh, second to last. Implementation plan, I don't believe that would be eligible under District Local Technical Assistance. So, uh, that gives you an idea of, uh, further services that we could provide down, down the road to help you, uh, pull your master plan together. Once again, it doesn't cost the town or anything, it would be from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And the next page on page five, uh, this is generally the process, uh, that I've been using to work with communities to get, uh, a chapter done. The first one is data collection and analysis, uh, then goal setting, where you wanna be in the future and developing recommendations, uh, to, uh, get you where you wanna go, uh, over the next ten to fifteen years. And, uh, generally it does take, uh, two to four meetings to complete an element. That'll be the case with this economic development chapter, like I said before. So, moving on to the next page on page six. I've put something together, uh, just last month. And, uh, the PowerPoint presentation hits the highlights of it, but there's more details in here and I know it's a lot of information.
There's a missing member, so could you release the extra copies?
Absolutely.
Or secretary for him.
Yes. So, uh, on page one, uh, it deals about, uh, employment, uh, your labor force. And, uh, it's interesting, if you look at table E D one, uh, you can see that the number of, uh, residents fluctuated very slightly over the last, uh, over, between two thousand and five and two thousand and sixteen. An increase of only about two point three percent in your, in your labor force, so there were, there were no big jumps there. Hubbardston unemployment, uh, saw a big jump between two thousand and eight, when it was five point five percent, and two thousand and nine, went up to eight point one percent, it was the highest in two thousand and ten at eight point three percent, it's not a surprise. Now it's at about three point three percent, which is very low. So, uh, this is all your residents, it, that has nothing to do with your, your businesses in, in the community. So, it's about all the residents, so it was interesting, when you look at some of the numbers, um, you can see before, uh, the Great Recession, your unemployment rate was always a little bit higher than the state rate, after the Great Recession, a little bit lower, very slightly lower. So, um, and it, and it's been going down, but like, once again, the number of employed people hasn't really increased substantially, so maybe a few less people are working these days or something, I don't know.
I don't think the population's increased significantly, I, like I said earlier, I think it's gone down last year. I mean, by like a couple people, not like massively, but.
So that makes sense then.
When you say employed and unemployed, excuse me, uh, does the State Department of Labor and Workforce, they're, they're subtracting out retired people and, and disabled people and young people and old people and.
Yes, they're.
They're synthesizing the, the, the real workforce.
Yes, yes, yeah, they do, yep.
What's the population of the town, forty-six hundred?
Forty-four something.
Yeah, forty-four to forty-six.
So that's, uh, that's, that's unemployment rate right there. Then we have measures of wealth, that includes a couple different categories, and if you go to this, this handout, it's got like a chart that's written E D two. And, uh, I picked out a, a couple of communities, uh, just so, surrounding communities, so that you can take a look at how they're doing too, just in comparison. And if you saw one that you, another one in, uh, out there that you'd like to see included, I, I'd be more than happy to do so. I didn't put Gardner in because it's a city, it's a lot, a lot different, and, um, or a Pittsburgh and a Lemonster, I tried to take communities that had relatively similar population, uh, or was like a direct neighbor, like, uh, Templeton.
Is this every man, woman, and child, when you say per capita?
That would be correct, yep.
Well, we're very closely aligned with the Quavon Regional School District and the five communities there. If, if those are relevant, I would think that perhaps Barry and maybe Oakham are the closest because they, they're physically as close, but, uh, those are probably the two closest in size and in, uh, certainly Barry in size, maybe not Oakham, but they would be interesting to see what their, what their rates are.
Yeah, I don't think Hardwick would be as, as good or your brain tree.
No, I don't think so.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Ashburnham is about the same size as us, but it's a little, its proximity to Pittsburgh gives it a little different.
Yeah, but there's still ways out of Pittsburgh and there's still ways, I had a distance to Route Two, I think, fit, um.
No, I'm, I'm for having them on the list, I'm just commenting that they're almost the same size.
Yeah.
And Princeton is another one we see commonly compared to us, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, but Princeton, yeah.
It's about the same population.
Yeah, don't take any off, just add.
Okay.
Yeah, these are good, yeah, good, good.
So, if you, uh, if you look at per capita income, uh, Massachusetts is a little over thirty-six thousand. Hubbardston, uh, is down by thirty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven. This can be explained, uh, in part by the size of households in Hubbardston, uh, which is two point eight percent, or, or two point eight persons, I should say, uh, which is more than the state at two point four eight persons, uh, per household. So, uh, that's kind of a trend in the region, I see that quite a bit, uh, in other communities too, when I, when I work for them in the Mont梭uset region. You, uh, a lot of times the per capita income will be below the state, but the household income will be a little bit higher the, than, than the state rate. So it seems like you're, you're following a trend there.
So there's more people per house?
Yes.
Hold, okay, that working.
Yeah, uh, just more people per house, so I assume that you've got, uh, some extra people working because the household side, size is a little bit bigger, larger.
Kids go away to college and they come back again.
A boomerang. This is a community survey. Uh, per capita, the previous slide was all the working, employed people getting a W two form or something that the government can track. And then, this is per capita, every man, woman, and child, then you move to per household or per family. How does it deal with retired people and, and that kinda stuff, is that all in that community survey?
Ri- retirement income, I believe, would be in there.
Okay.
Yeah, i- I think it's any kind of, you, any kind of assistance, uh, uh, public, any kind of public assistance.
So they're looking at tax returns or something?
They must be. They must be, I'm not sure.
Okay.
So, uh, moving on to, to page eight. Uh, we have household income here, uh, it's l- less than Ashburnham and Westminster, but more than Phillipston and Templeton and like I had mentioned before, the state, so the household income is more, more than the state. Following a, a trend of other similar communities in Mont梭uset region. The median family income is less, also less than Ashburnham and Westminster, uh, but more than Templeton and Phillipston in the state too.
Which is the most important number, are, are they all just as important, they're just used separately? Is the median family income is what's really describes a comput- community and?
It could, I think that, uh, there are more families, uh, in the, in a lot of communities in the Mont梭uset region, it's more family oriented. Then when you go towards Boston, you, you'll have some single people living alone out there, unrelated people, maybe sharing an apartment. But in Hubbardston, I bet that you'd find, and I, and I can look this up too, uh, I think that there would be, uh, more, uh, families.
Sure, that would correlate with the number of apartments available for rent and single family housing dominates the market, sure.
It does, it's probably about ninety percent or something.
Oh, sure.
It's probably pretty high.
And we're not deal, doing too badly for family income.
Yep, you're doing okay there.
I mean, compared to the, even median household, compared to the state, we're pretty fr- uh, above average by sixteen percent or something.
Yep, the, that would be correct. The per capita income, of course, is lower, but the family, uh, income.
Size is bigger, yeah.
It's a little bit bigger, a little bit more money. So, uh, also your poverty rate in Hubbardston is, uh, relatively low, so that's, that's a really good thing. Uh, if you compare it to the state, the state was at eleven point six percent, I was surprised that Templeton was ten point four percent. But the state is eleven point six percent, so you're half that.
What's the, uh, how, how is poverty measured, is it against per capita, per household, or per family?
Uh, that's a ve- that's a very good question, below poverty.
And what would the number be?
Yeah, let me check into that, tha- that's a good question, I, I think that it's per capita, I think, but I'm not sure. It might be family, I'll, I'll, I'll check into it.
And what the, the value would be? Cause one thing, it's one thing to look at, excuse me while I shuffle papers, it's one thing to look at the number, which I think is the average. You know, but it's another thing to know the shape of the curve, is it, is it, you know, like that? Or is it like this, and we got a lot of people in poverty, you know, what's the shape of the curve? Is any kind of information like that available?
Actually, there is, uh, in the, uh, American Community Survey, uh, they have like a, a list of like, uh, ten or twelve income categories, like zero to ten thousand, ten to twenty thousand, thirty to, to fifty, and, um, I could, I could include some information on that to see, to see that curve where, where.
Yeah, if there's a, if there's a whole bunch of millionaires in here, we, you know, pulls that number up doesn't really help the general population, on the other hand, if it's a pretty tight
Yeah.
shape and.
Mm-hmm, I can certainly include that.
Is that a ton of work, or is that readily available?
I- it's readily available.
And I'm always looking at it for Hubbardston, not all towns, I mean, unless it's a punch of a button, I don't know.
Yeah, it's.
If you press F twelve and out it comes, that's great.
Yeah, that'd be like a lot of, uh, yeah, to be.
But otherwise, just.
I did it for every community, be pages.
Yeah.
But I could certainly do that. Okay. Then, uh, th- on this, page nine of the PowerPoint right here, we have number and types of jobs in Hubbardston. And from two thousand and ten to two thousand and sixteen, this is on page three, I believe, of, uh, of this right here, uh, the number of establishments actually decreased by one, uh, within those six years. So, you also lost ninety-one workers, or ninety perc- nineteen percent of the employment base, uh, in, in Hubbardston.
Excuse me, John, I mean, a lot of this data, and I've seen this data before, is your, if you go page four, it says the Hubbardston largest employers.
Yes.
Okay, that, all those figures are completely erroneous.
That, I've heard that from other communities too, and I was debating whether the, if we didn't hear or not.
And if these charts are based off that, um, like this, with this first one with a hundred to two hundred employee, that, that, that business doesn't exist.
Okay.
And the police department or the fire chief, I mean, between the police department and, and, and the fire department, it, it shows, you know, anywhere be- between, you know, sixty and a hundred and fifty employees and there's nowhere near that, Ron Burton's training camp, only hires, I don't think they have one or two employees if they have that, I mean.
I've heard similar things.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know where they get these numbers from.
Yeah.
And where are you looking, Tom?
On page four. So if that, well, the reason I interrupted you before that was because if these, if these tables are developed using those numbers, the tables are way, way, way off.
Yeah, uh.
How would we find out the actual num- how would, we, we have to try to find that out from like the town clerk or something?
Uh, if you didn't wanna rely on the state information, you would have to get it from the town clerk.
Yeah, cause I think we're gonna have to do that, okay.
Okay.
Cause this, I mean, there's some of this stuff is, wide angle marketing and stuff, I, 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 I don't know him that well, but I do know, uh, there's only twenty, I mean, I mean, I don't, I don't think there's more than five or six people there, I could be wrong, but, um, and then, and then they don't have any of the, um, yeah, so they don't have, they don't have any of the farms and stuff on here.
They have country hen.
They have country hen.
Well, just the fact that it says the fire chief employs twenty to forty-nine, then the fire department employs twenty to forty-nine.
Yeah.
Makes zero sense.
Yeah. Okay, so, sorry to interrupt, but that, that's, that's a really important, so, so we really should find out names. Names and number of.
Registered businesses from the town clerk.
Please, yeah, from, from town, we may have to contact these people and get like actual figures that they'll give them to us.
Might, yeah, you might have to do that, I don't know if the town clerk will have that, but they'll have the list of all the businesses registered.
Right, okay, and maybe we can send a letter out to them, all of those businesses, and ask them just to fill out a little survey form, how many people they employ average.
And some of these don't exist anymore, right?
Yeah, some of them aren't even here anymore.
My Hubbardston Veterinary Clinic, I believe that's going.
No, it's not, no, no, they're there, that's actually one of the one that's correct.
Where is it?
It's right in the, uh, Breezy Hills.
Oh, it is, okay.
So you need to buy, you need to get a dog.
No thanks.
Like leading edge, there's only two people that work in there.
Well, all right, so, that's some, some of the less, I don't think those are gonna, luckily, I don't think those are relevant to the statistics that we need to really know in terms of income and family size and that kinda stuff.
It does, but when it says here, you know, how many, you know, how many people do we employ, I don't know.
If you, if you look at it through the economic development lens, you know, there's, there's always the question of how many companies are here and what are they doing, and how can we attract more, so that might be helpful.
Average employment and wages by industry, see this table E D four, that probably is correct. Is up to the whole town, and they get that from the, from the Department of, the Employment Agents.
How does this work, like, uh, say someone's a caregiver, like healthcare, social assistant, they're a caregiver, but then. How does this work? Like, uh say someone's a caregiver, like healthcare, social assistant, they're a caregiver, but they don't live in Hubbardston. They come into Hubbardston, work here and leave. They might be the employee of the agency in Gardner.
Mm-hmm.
And uh.
Oh.
How does that work? Do they not get counted?
I think that if they're working in Hubbardston, you would count.
They're counted?
Yeah.
So they're like the caregiver, care receivers employee?
Yes, I s- I suppose, yeah. If they're working in Hubbardston, that's a job in in Hubbardston.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Hmm. Okay, sorry to interrupt you there.
No, no, these are are good points. So we can, we can take this chart out. I've had problems, like I was saying, in other communities with with this data too.
Yeah.
I wouldn't take it out because the employee column is the only question. The name and the address are not as useful.
For the most part, at least it lists some, but well, we'd have to verify whether they were still in business, quite frankly.
Yeah, but it's a starting point, so why not leave it in?
Okay.
And uh just.
Well, we'll we'll just update the list for for our next meeting.
Yeah. Put a footnote down.
Yeah, I can get that list and I'll get it to you before the meeting, then we can, that's what we're talking about doing.
Okay. Okay, that sounds great.
And that will whether it will affect these charts and I. I don't know.
Yeah, cause these charts.
They're it's, they may be just totally unrelated to this piece of information right here.
That's right. I don't know that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it says that somewhere, I thought, Brad, we we lost lost ninety-one workers.
Did it, yes.
In Hubbardston. I don't think we have ninety.
Well, that's that's from the, that's from the table on uh ED two. No, I'm sorry. ED one. You're looking at twenty-three seventeen versus twenty-four eleven employed.
Okay, so that that's.
That's ninety-four. Ninety-four law. No, that's in ninety-four D.
No, it says here, employment-based decreased ninety-one workers or nineteen percent of employment-based in Hubbardston.
Yeah, there would be ED three under average employment.
This is we 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 had the same conversation when we were doing the housing plan, remember?
Mm-hmm.
It was the same charts.
Yeah, it all came out of MRPC, right?
Yeah.
We've seen it before, right?
But they are different sources. This is unemployment assistance.
Mm-hmm.
Well, all this is i- is extremely helpful. I mean, there's there's no question about it. You need to know some of this background.
Yeah.
But with uh with what it means towards how we are going to develop in Hubbardston in terms of an economic base. I'd like to just switch gears for for a minute, because I I had an idea that I'd like to run by you, and I'm afraid we're gonna run out of time with our appointment here. We have a public hearing, we have to start it a little after seven. But uh. We've had, as I said, the Economic Development Committee that has met in the past and have gone over much of this. And we've gone over some of the comparisons that we've had with other towns. Uh Tom, for instance, did a comparison with Westminster and their. Industrial park over there. The the comparisons that we've all seen basically don't compare. Because what Hubbardston is in uniqueness is compared to all the other surrounding communities that we get compared to. And I'm sure this is no surprise to you, that very difficult to compare us to a community that has infrastructure and has. A system that can support a a a large development or a industrial, an industrial park. Or any type of manufacturing base that needs a public water supply, anything that needs a sewerage system. It's a very difficult, very difficult uh thing to find in Hubbardston. In fact, you know, it just doesn't exist. The poor lady that started the Hubbardston Pizza Palace had a heck of a time getting a public water system in place, so that she could run that restaurant of hers. So we we don't, we we'd like to be able to say that we could compete with all these other towns, but it doesn't look like we could, really. And all the facts and the figures that I have seen indicate that without what they call an industrial park. We're still doing pretty well. We have a lower tax rate than Westminster has that has a industrial park. We have a lower tax rate than Phillipsden and Templeton. I'm sorry, not not Templeton. Uh we have a lower tax rate than uh.
Princeton.
Princeton and Holden, for instance, these areas that have these industrial complexes to support the economic development. We seem to have a better handle on everything. We still balance our budget, and we have a situation where, uh what does it mean? You know, where can you go with that? And it's been my hypothesis all along that basically Hubbardston runs on families. That this is a a family-based community. The businesses that we're talking about in your lists are primarily businesses that the families in Hubbardston run. And I would, I would love to see a little bit of an opportunity for these families to tap in and get even bigger out of what they wanna do. So my question is, is there any community? Or would we be able to do something along the lines of focusing on family-run businesses? The the cottage communities that we have, the cottage businesses that people run. Would it be possible to focus on them as our economic base? Um one of the ideas that I've had is to take uh some of our free cash that we have in town. Every year, we have a certain amount of free cash that gets generated from either the state-owned land or the solar developments that we have. Um would it be possible to take some of that and guarantee small business loans against it? Working with a local financial institution, that we could take, pick a number, two hundred thousand dollars of free cash. Dedicated to a program where families and cottage businesses and small businesses in the town that reside here. Could go to XYZ Bank and say, I'd like a loan because I wanna buy more equipment for my business. I would like to do this. And the town would be able to support that with a guarantee to the small business loans that that could be generated. Is that a feasible idea?
Yeah, these are interesting concepts. I was hoping that things like this could be brought up tonight. Uh so that I could research it and then come back next month and we can talk about uh about these issues. I can, I can look into it and try and get some details. You had an interesting point too about the the tax rate and everything. I did compare your single-family, average single-family tax bill.
ED eight.
And uh I compared it to, we have twenty-two towns and cities in our region. Uh fifteen communities had a higher single-family tax rate. Only six had lo- a lower tax rate. So uh you're spot on in in a lot of the points that that you brought up.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's it's just a fact. Uh the um single fam- average single-family tax bill uh is three thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars. Uh if you go out towards Harvard, it's ten thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it it's a lot more. So you have some good points there. And the family-run businesses, uh that can be a really good thing for Hubbardston. So I I can look into that.
You know, it it's interesting because the the number one source of revenue in the town of Hubbardston is the planning board. Because of the zoning bylaws that we've developed. We've developed the Senior Residential Development bylaw. Which keeps all the roads and those developments private. People have to be fifty-five years and elder to live there. They pay all the taxes. They have no children in the school system. The town provides it with no services except police, fire, and ambulance. And not not a lot of police calls go to these communities. But the the ambulances call, and we make money on the ambulances. So I, we generate about uh two, I think the. I had it someplace. About two hundred and thirty-two. Two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars a year in taxes from those two subdivisions. As a result of the bylaws that we wrote. And then we also wrote the the solar farm bylaws. Which we're sitting, looking at about the fifth or the sixth solar farm that we're licensing. And right now, we're close to a hundred and ten thousand dollars in revenue from them. So between those two bylaws that we developed, we're bringing in over three hundred thousand dollars a year in revenue. But those help not only the town, they also help the people who live here, you know, so it it makes sense for everybody. And I think that's the concept that I'd like to see going along with, is a community-based uh opportunity. If you wanna be in construction and you need a backhoe, and you don't have the funds to get it, is there a possibility that we could offer that as a service to. To residents in the community who could take advantage of it and then become even more productive as they live here and work here?
And expanding on that a little bit, is there a way to leverage it? I know on the federal level, there's a SBA, Small Business Administration, that does something like this. Is there such a thing on the state level? And is there a way for Hubbardston's, I'm gonna call it Hubbardston's Small Business Administration. Hubbardston's uh guaranteed loan program to be leveraged with state money? We put up a hundred, they put up a hundred, and goes into the bank and somebody can borrow fifty.
Well, you know, the only problem with something like that, Tom, is then if you if you include state money, you're gonna have to fund people who may wanna do business in town, but live in Westminster or Gardner.
Well, I don't know the rules and regulations. I'm just wondering if it exists. It's our option option to either.
Sure.
Join hands with it, or say, there's too many strings and we don't wanna get joined-handed. But I'm looking for leverage, that's all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it it would just be a an opportunity for the town to do something productive for the community. And that's what all of our previous history has been about, trying to make the town better. But the the options that we discussed earlier, the industrial parks and the big manufacturing bases, it's it's just not feasible for us, small towns.
You said that, that why, can you elaborate on that? Why that, why don't you think that's feasible?
You don't have town sewer and water. Uh also the zoning in place, it's not geared towards uh any kind of industrial park. But uh also accessibility, you don't have a Route Two going through Hubbardston, you don't have a four-ni- Route four ninety-five. Uh you just don't have the infrastructure in place to uh attract to anything large scale in terms of industry.
So even if we changed our zoning, it still wouldn't be a, is that what you're sa- I'm not putting, I'm trying to find out what you're.
Oh, well.
If we changed the zoning, would we have opportunities for these things, or there's other towns?
Uh you would, most likely not. I mean, a big business would be looking for a Route Two for or four ninety-five. Uh with town water and sewer.
And the access ramp goes right into the parking lot, yeah.
Right. I mean, that that's what they're looking for. So you you're not gonna get a large-scale office, uh park, uh in Hubbardston. That's my professional opinion.
Yeah, judging by the data on your your slides here, the big business in Hubbardston means a large families. The the bigger the families, the the bigger the businesses.
But yeah, the payroll is pretty substantial.
It is, sure, for families especially.
Yeah, I mean, this is just uh lots of, lots of little things.
Yeah, I think the family-run businesses in this town are just phenomenal. You never know about them, you know, just, but they're there.
Mm-hmm.
And that's why I think that it's it's helped to maintain the composure of the the town, the character, and people like it this way. They seem to anyway.
It's a residential setting with business integrated.
So what you're saying, Ben, is you you, your idea is to to provide money and seed money for for smaller businesses to be able to expand into big, bigger businesses in town?
Well, I don't know if they wanna expand it to be bigger businesses, but certainly they wanna expand to be able to be more profitable, whether they would get larger or just are able to. To do more with more equipment and and.
I bet it goes as small as just buying a new computer system.
Well, that that would be sure.
You know, I I wanna upgrade my computer system. I wanna upgrade my wifi. I want a satellite connection. I want a T four connection instead of a dial-up, you know?
If we were able to get the town to get um, you know, these mo- FiOS or something, with the fiber optic speeds of internet up, would that help with economic development?
Yes, that that would help.
Okay, so.
Absolutely, right.
So that's something we should perhaps look into?
Yeah, that would that would help.
Because a lot of, a lot of these businesses now are being based on the.
Mm-hmm.
Uh internet. I was just talking to my daughter, she's gonna go to graduate school, and she, it's all online. You guys probably, it's kinda weird. But they just, you have to attend class, but you sit in your house and look on your computer, and you can ask questions and it's kinda like.
Pajama sales are going way up.
Maybe we should bring back the horse blanket, uh industry and others doing that. Okay. I was reading about a little bit of the Hubbardston history too, and back in the seventeen, you know, eighteen hundreds, uh. You know, eighteen thirty to eighteen ninety, there was a lot of businesses in town and a lot of factories in town. They and they had, employed a lot of people. But the reason they did was the transportation system wasn't there to move people out of town.
Hmm.
And that was part of the, part of the problem. Once the car came along and or the railroads and then the automobile. All those businesses closed because they they would be able to leave Hubbardston.
And scale.
And scale, yeah. That is just a fascinating uh read on it.
And then we had Jonas Clark, who our library is named after, who was a prominent member of the community, who developed the the wagons with wheels that helped them move out.
Okay.
We also have a library fundraiser this Saturday.
That's right.
Oh, yeah.
For the Jonas Clark Library.
The uh race, if you, the F K race, if you'd care to uh come and participate in that.
Oh, I'm not that fast, but I could, I could make it.
You don't have to be. There's a walking category. And for a small fee, you'll get a free shirt.
Oh.
Did you hear that? For a small fee, you get a free shirt.
Yeah, we're getting just like NPR. We have no shame.
Uh so have we covered everything, John, today that you wanted to?
Yeah, yeah, if if we could meet again in in four weeks or something, that'd be fantastic.
That'd be fine.
Do you wanna meet a regular meeting? Do you wanna do it as a separate meeting, so we have more time?
Well, I think another regular meeting would be good. Um I'd like to have that information that you're gonna look up, come back here, and if if.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Anybody else would like to join us, that'd be also good. And we're going to be getting reorganized for the master plan. But I think the the next, the third, second meeting after this would be probably better off in the subcommittee of the master plan. But I think the next one at the planning board, that'd be good.
So I'll be uh October fourth?
October four.
And I'll work on that, get that job infant, uh the the businesses, I'll ask Joyce. I'll be, I'll be working with you anyways, John, on some of this stuff.
Okay, great. Yeah, thank you.
So if you have any questions or something, just give me a or email, yeah, give me a call or email me.
I will. Right, thanks.
And um I'll be, I'll be seeing you tomorrow night at the MRPC meeting.
Glenn is sending me out to Greenfield for another meeting.
Go that far out there, huh? Well.
Yeah, they're they're doing a a workshop on uh the uh impact to the new marijuana laws on communities.
Oh, yeah, we'll have to listen to that too.
So you have to keep up with that. Yeah, it's very important.
Is Glenn gonna have something for tomorrow's meeting about the marijuana laws zoning? Cause we have to start working on that.
Yes, yes.
He has that for the meeting tomorrow night, yeah.
Oh, good.
Yeah, he'll be going through that.
Yeah.
Well, that's good.
Good job.
Yeah, thank you very much for coming by. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Well, we're looking forward to seeing you next month.
And we're running out of money.
Oh, no, 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 we're, 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 we're finished.
We gotta save some for the end, because of the, you, we'd like you to.
Okay.
Actual report right here.
Of course, of course. Thank you. Thank you, John. Appreciate it.
And we'll do it at six o'clock too, as well, before the meeting.
If that works for you, is, is that okay for you?
Six is great.
All right.
Six is great. Yeah, thank you.
Great, well, great, thanks, John.
Nice meeting you, John.
Okay. Appreciate it. Take care, guys.
So Zach, how you been? Good to see you still working.
Still working.
How'd you get in here without getting wet?
Yeah, a little wet. I was quick. I was dodging the rain.
Well, you put that solar system up in Barry quick, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, everyone was throwing eggs at us, we had to get it up, get it out of there fast.
They were? Why? Oh, because you took one of the most beautiful fields in town?
I've learned, I've learned my lessons, don't worry.
Is that a cross from Stetson?
Yeah.
Yeah, you do that one across from Stetson? Oh, that's nice.
Yeah, I decided out of mine now. Well, the plantings haven't gone up yet, we'll plant those in a couple of weeks once we get the growing season really, really going, so.
It's a cross from Stetson?
Directly across.
Now it's owned by the Worcester Seven Hills Foundation.
It is?
Yeah.
What is the Stetsons?
Stetson home.
Did Stetson own that land or is that someone else's land?
It was a big farm, that is.
Um, it's about a, it's about a seven, say an eight acre field, we did about a four and a half acre project on it.
Eight, four and a half on eight? Well, that's not very big, five megawatts?
It's just in, it's in the intersection of two roads, it's like, you can't, it's just there.
Well, we put the plantings up, we'll see if it doesn't look there.
I just can't, I couldn't believe the speed, cause I go by there every week. And I'm like, holy smokes.
Once you get, you know, you guys remember it on our first project and even this one, like, it takes eighteen months to develop them and three months to build them. And even a small project like that, six weeks.
Soon as you get the money. I was interested, I looked at Gardner. And Gardner has one solar project, one megawatt, the Mill Street project.
They got another one on West Street, we built two in Gardner, one on Mill Street, one on West Street.
I thought the West Street doesn't need any of this.
When are you guys gonna start doing wind power so you can make your money all night long?
Oh, wind blows, man, come on.
Sure does.
That does weird stuff to the power too, you gotta.
Oh, come on, and they work at night though.
Yeah, but you need, you need to expend power to turn them, make them work.
Yeah, you gotta spin them, yeah. There's one up at the hospital, and I thought there were two on, two you guys are doing at the fishing, no, not you, but somebody else is doing one at the Fish and Gun Club. And you're doing one on West Street.
Yep, the old gravel pit there, Perkins' old gravel pit.
And then there's another one out on Route sixty-eight towards the Templeton line, that access through Morris Road, one.
That's the one you're talking about, that's West Street.
Okay, that's the West Street?
Same one, yep.
Is that built?
No, there's another one on Clark Street. So there's two huge forty acre gravel pits in there. And we're building projects this size.
Yeah, like seven megawatts or something.
Same exact size, different obviously shape, but spinning in those two big gravel pits, yeah.
The town of Hubbardston has an old dump, cause you've been putting them on, does that work?
No, it's a state-owned dump, we've asked them, they won't let us.
Oh.
DCR owns it.
They own the land there?
Yeah, they won't let us.
The biggest statewide project that's happened has been the Department of Transportation sites that are off like.
Fast bike.
Where you see right on the highway. Those are smaller projects, but that one, DOT, put together a pretty big initiative.
Pretty big one in Natick, they're off the ram, it's inside the Cloverland.
I haven't seen that one. Yeah, there's a fair amount of highways spread across the state.
Feel good.
Well, let's proceed here. Question for you folks. Before we do this, as you know, I've been recusing myself from these hearings because of the potential conflict of interest with Borrego, which I checked with the Ethics Commission on, and they don't seem to think I am any longer in conflict. Therefore, it's been eight, nine, ten months perhaps. I filed a proper paperwork with the town clerk to disclose all of that. And if you don't have a problem with it, I've been involved with all the hearings and listening to them, not as a participant. And I don't think the Mullen Rule has to come into effect, but if it's okay with you guys, then I'll come back in and participate with the conclusion of this hearing. If you have any objection to that, then I won't, but.
As long as the board's comfortable that you participating isn't gonna create any issues with not being in a proper number of meetings or something like, somehow cast doubt on.
I've been to every meeting.
Good, okay.
Yeah, you've been here for everyone.
Every meeting and.
So you've been here for, yeah, but Kendall's missing tonight.
Right, we have one person missing tonight.
So he can make up one. Will he be recorded tonight?
Yes.
He could be actually recording too and participating involved.
But he can make up one according to the absentee rules, as I understand him.
So we have you as a spare.
Yes.
So if he can't, say he misses another meeting, then he can't participate.
Right, that's fine.
Unless he goes back and listens and does the required rulings on that.
Can only miss one meeting live.
Live?
Yeah, he can't make up more than one. And just for clarification, if I understand it correctly, you have not been involved with anything Borrego for ten months, you say?
At least. And I've gone over that with the Attorney General, they seem to think there was no conflict. I've written out my whatever, five oh three B, some whatever name.
Yeah, the disclosure.
Disclosure will file that with the town clerk. So if you guys are comfortable with it and everybody else is comfortable with it, then, you know, fine, if not, I have a.
Well, actually, Kendall would have to sit in as well as me because we'll need the five, or you should have the five people voting.
Yep.
He has participated in these.
That's right.
It's the same situation as.
Pre-Craig, yeah.
I'm not trying to throw you under the bus or anything, but I think.
No, I had forgotten.
No, I think he's only missed one meeting.
No, we had two, three meetings before the election.
No.
I don't think so, we had long continuums because of the summer holiday.
Yeah, we had two, two, three before.
I think Craig's only missed one meeting.
We'll have to check it.
Double check.
Yeah, we'll double check.
I think there were like three of them.
Oh, all right.
It's like a fourth meeting.
When?
Not on this one, not on this project.
I don't know. He came in once for an informal, and that might have, remember we just kinda like, you guys quit.
What was the date of your application? I guess that's, that'll tell us everything.
Well, if we had two, there is pre-vote because the vote happened.
I believe it was April.
Well, it was April, then he's missed more than he should, yeah.
Well, but they didn't have him every month.
Continued one, you guys had a month off, I think.
Took July off.
Yeah, there you go.
Well, we'll double check.
Whatever.
That's okay.
Right, well, there's not a lot that's changed since the last time we talked with you.
A lot has been, if you guys are gonna be comfortable with that, then what we'll do is we'll move to postpone, I'm sorry.
Recede the regular scheduled meeting.
Regular scheduled planning.
I did that before I came in.
I never seem to get that phraseology, that's one thing that hangs me up every week. Yeah, I know. We'll move to recess the regular planning board meetings to reconvene the scheduled hearing with Borrego for the one fifty-seven Williamsville Road project, a motion to recess.
So made.
Second.
All in favor? opposed? All right, planning board's in recess, and now we're gonna reconvene the hearing on the special permit application for the one forty-seven Williamsville Road solar project. And for the record of the hearing, we'll make it known that the applicant does not object to my participation in the future hearings and decision-making on this project. Nor do I hear any objection from the attendees, none. Thank you. All right, so, let me say this. We're at the point where we've had one site visit out at Williamsville Road with members of the planning board and members of the Conservation Commission. And as I understand it, you've also had another site visit with Conservation out there, which is, that was what, in July or August, whatever it was?
I believe it was in July.
Yeah, and additional issues, I guess, were found on that one.
Yeah, let me start off with that. Since as far as our solar system layout and our general site arrangement, not a lot has changed since the last time we were here before you. What changed, there were some minor adjustments to some of the wetland lines based on Bill Murray's input and our consultant. They also found a new, really small wetland down in the western part of the site. It was kind of unusual, and it wasn't something that they noticed the first time through, but there's some things that comes out of the hill, and it's created a little bit of a channel, and then it goes back underground. So it's a short channel. The area of what was flagged out there is just over a thousand square feet. Our consultants determined that that was a bordering vegetated wetland, so it carries the hundred-foot buffer along with that. There was a lot of discussion about this small, isolated wetland that's in the center of our system. And Bill searched, our consultant searched, they couldn't find any defined channel from that. So he agreed in the long run that that was an isolated wetland there. So we didn't make any changes in that regard. What we did is, last month, we went back before the Conservation Commission and asked for approval to impact this small wetland area. There was not a lot of vegetation in it. That's part of the reason that it was missed the first time that the consultants went through. And they didn't object to that as long as we provided an offsetting mitigation area up here nearer to the more defined and healthier wetland system up here in the northern part of the site. So they voted to approve our notice of intent with the offer of the one-to-one mitigation for the impacts that we're proposing down here. It would have, it would have been a.
You take some away and you put some in?
Right.
You artificially build?
Yeah, it would be replication for the areas that we're impacting.
So two-to-one replication, is it?
We offered one-to-one and they voted to approve it, but if we need to do two-to-one, the area that we're showing is probably closer to two and a half to one. So, and that's for both of these areas, which we don't actually require mitigation for this isolated area, so.
The isolated area, I thought the last thing I heard was that you weren't gonna actually build on it.
We are, we are not filling it. That was what we had said before. We are going to place racks in there, we're gonna cut the trees, but we're not gonna change the grades. So we're not actually dredging or filling in that area, so.
And how big is that?
It is twenty-eight hundred square feet. So the total between the two is less than four thousand square feet.
It's fifty by fifty, roughly?
Yeah, on that, on that order, yeah, yeah.
It's not, it's not a vernal pool?
It is not a vernal pool, no. It was still judged to be an isolated wetland area when everything was said and done after the second visit. And we provided that revised mapping back to Bill Murray's. And so that's where that stands. So that's really the only change, it didn't change our system layout because it would have been a major impact if we tried to do that. And that area is also proposed to be graded in order to flatten it out some so that our systems can be installed there. Aside from that, it seems like the major topic of discussion was the entrance. So I'll let Zach speak to that, but we've had some conversations with the neighbor across the street who'd be most affected by that. I have a second exhibit here that shows that in detail. And this is just an aerial view of where our proposed accessway comes in. His residence is over here, so all of these trees would be remaining. And what we did earlier at the board's request is we spaced these proposed poles further apart, so it pushes them further down the grade and further away from the roadway and the residence. So there'll be quite a bit of vegetative buffer between him and our proposed facilities there. Our driveway basically lines up with his driveway across the street. So I don't think it will create any conflict there.
Did you move it? You must have moved it then.
We didn't move it, no.
We shifted the angle of it a bit, the way it's perpendicular.
At the property line angle, which doesn't come in perpendicular to the street.
Maybe it's just more identified than it was.
And where is the homeowner's driveway?
It is right here. You can't see it because of the tree.
But the, the subject.
Oh, it is right here. You can't see it, but it comes right through this tree line. It's just to the west from the Ladybug site there.
There was some discussion about taking the entrance and moving it further toward the existing driveway, what happened with that?
So we still have issues with that because of the existing underground utilities that are put there with the, with National Grid to feed the home. And we also just, frankly, the landowner does not wanna have that existing driveway used for a dual purpose.
No, it wasn't so much using their driveway, which is moving that proposed driveway that you have closer to their driveway, coming at a more of an angle.
I think that's what we did a little bit, it shifted over a bit. But basically, we were on site, I think it was earlier this summer. Unfortunately, Chris Perner, who's across the street, wasn't there. We talked about it in a lot of detail there with Bill and obviously the board. On the twenty-second of August, I met with Chris when he had some available time. I showed him the changes we made to the plan, adjusting the road and then spreading the poles instead of four poles twenty feet apart. Now they're stretched out seventy-five to a hundred feet apart. And kinda talked him through what we were doing. And he reached out to Mark to kind of voice his, I don't wanna say his happiness with the project, but simply his acceptance with the plan, his.
Mark is the property owner?
No, Chris.
He, he called me last week, he wasn't gonna be here this evening. And he said the discussions that they had, he was comfortable with.
So I think one of the big issues we were having on site was trying to represent the landlord's feelings and expectations without him there. So we had that meeting, I basically took him through a very similar step-through of what we talked about with further modifications from the plan that we all had out there. And simply said, this is kind of my best effort to be a responsible developer and do the right thing. We also had some conversations, if, after we build it, if he's not comfortable or happy with how things are, we're gonna talk about some plantings on his property. He's got that grass, that grass in front yard there.
Yeah.
Just to help plant some screenings. Obviously, it's hard for us to put that on our plan for someone else's property, but I'm certainly willing to put that in any conditions for your approval that we have to work with the landlord to, you know, for future plantings or something like that. I think we're trying to do our best to keep our landowner happy as well as the neighborhood here. And, you know, we've gotta, we're challenged with a bit of a, of a small neck here for our frontage. And so I think that's, that's a compromise that, like Mark said, Chris was happy with, or maybe not happy, but accepting of. And we'll continue to work with him to make sure we're having as little impact as possible on his day-to-day life.
Did you have any objections from Ladybug Farm?
I think her objections were she really wanted us over there. And I think it sounded like some of the local politics where she wants more of those trees cleared to help her farm, but I kinda stand on that.
That's just based on the statements that she made at the site. She wanted these trees that are right along the property line to come down because they shade her gardens.
But they wouldn't, they wouldn't come down anyways.
They wouldn't be coming down anyway, so she's.
Are they her trees or the other guy's trees?
There are trees.
They're on, yeah, they're on.
Solar, solar purpose.
Right, on the subject of.
If you flip back to the other one, just from a project perspective, I mean, there are hundreds or thousands of feet, the actual project.
What is the frontage on Williamsville Road?
It's just a little bit more than the minimum needed, there's a little bit of a.
I think it's two hundred feet, it's just over the minimum frontage that's required.
So Chris Perner's okay with it?
Yeah, you wanna flip that back, just he had a couple more comments.
You're gonna paint the pole string?
Stick those.
Put branches in them?
Put branches in, like the.
Those things stick out more than the regular ones.
Like the cell tower.
Apparently, there was some discussion with you folks about keeping that driveway to the minimum width. And a suggestion that I might have would be to pre-flag everything and have it viewed by our consultant before you do the clearings. What we've seen in the past, not necessarily with you folks, but with a couple of the other projects, particularly one down the road, they had limited clearing. And the limited clearing seemed to grow two to three times what they proposed.
No, I think, I think we're very confident with our surveying and all that, and I have no problem with that as a condition.
So if you have a pre-flag.
Pre-construction condition, we'll flag everything out, we'll put our portion controls in place, I'd be happy to stand up to that.
That way everyone knows what they're working with and in accordance with what the plan is.
Hundred percent.
Then there's no confusion.
If you're gonna force us to build what we promised to build, I can't push back on that.
Well, yeah.
No, I, this is definitely a sensitive site, especially with kinda some of the area impacting some of the wetlands. And we've worked with Conservation on impacting it to the very minimum possible, so no objection at all.
This time are we gonna do all the pre-conditions before we start?
We'll make sure that's what happens, yes.
I thought there was also a sightline concern from the, what I'll call the solar entrance, looking west on Williamsville.
Bill had raised that at the site. And because we're gonna have relatively little traffic, even during the construction period, what we would agree to do is have the site staff direct traffic at times where there are deliveries. what we would agree to do is have the site staff direct traffic at times where there are deliveries to the site. And we could put up some, uh, construction level signage to warn that there's a construction entrance ahead during construction and, uh, possibly permanent signage to say hidden driveway. But once the system's in operation, we would only be visiting two or three times a year, so.
There's a driveway right next to it, I mean, archivical.
Right, and it would be directly across from his driveway, so it would function much in the same way.
Yeah, but there's one to the west of it too, yeah.
Would just have less traffic than his driveway does, so.
I, I kinda agree, there'd be definitely minimum traffic there. You may wanna check with the police chief about having somebody from your crew directing traffic. They, they kinda frown on that. You know, if you know there's one day or two days to this whole project, you're gonna have a couple of tractor trailers out there. You may just wanna ask the local police to have a detail there for you.
Yep.
Because instead of getting stopped halfway through and being told to leave, because you're not, you have to be in, in the road.
Our general, uh- Our general practice is to put up temporary signage, construction vehicles entering caution and stuff like that, but, um-
Well, if it's a sharp corner, if you think you need somebody in the road, you may wanna ask them, as they may wanna provide a detail for a couple of days.
I think we definitely rather.
Just on a note, because it came up this week. And I don't know the status of it, we have a whole list of scenic roads. And I, I'm not sure if Williamville, Williamsville Road falls on that scenic road category.
Was on the list that I saw.
Was?
Come on.
Well, it may not have been, I don't know. I just wanna, the, the list is on the website. We just need to check it so that, before you do your driveway.
Okay, we can, we can check that every three, I'm very surprised that Bill Murray missed that.
Two or three other projects.
I think, I think it is, actually.
He may not have, but-
He, he gets pretty much everything.
Yeah, he-
We have a couple of projects on that road already, right?
Well, we tweaked our stormwater calculations a couple of times for them.
Yes, right.
Uh, made some other changes to the plan, but we're pretty much, aside from the issues that were not resolved at the, at the site, visit, resolved with those conditions. They were mostly technical details, uh, regarding the stormwater and, and some details on the plans. So, uh, we finalized the plan based on, on the walks out there and, uh, we feel that it's final and ready to go. Um, I understand that he'll probably be writing conditions for you for your decision and all of that, but, uh, that would be just the typical process. I think we are pretty well closed out with the issues that they've raised.
So what do you guys have for timetable? Have you got an ETA on this?
Yeah, um, the SMART program, aptly named, which is stepping in for the SREC program as it, as it sunsets here, is scheduled to open in the spring of next year. So basically, we have kind of differing minds right now internally, whether we start construction in the fall to get most of the civil work done before the winter, or try to do that work in the spring. Sometimes civil work can get kinda nasty in the spring. So, um, assuming we can close out here, um, really, we're hoping for, for a close this evening. We'd be applying for the building permit in a few months after we finish our full design, take it to a full construction level set, and close up any conditions that may be in there. And then if there's time, go for it this fall, and if there's not, it would be a, a spring two thousand eighteen project. I think either way, coming online, um, Q three, late Q three, early Q four of, of twenty eighteen. So just talking about some of the other, the, the point you made at the previous meeting, I think the scale of this project, it would be, um, based on the pilot rates we've done for the other projects, would be just south of a hundred thousand dollars a year in the pilot taxes. So that would be one of the next steps too, is after we close with this board, to open up communications with the town administrator and the board of selectmen to move, to get a, a tax agreement in place for this project.
Okay, so Murray told me today that he had not received any site plans, official site plans, or any communication at all in the last sixty days or so.
In the last sixty days?
So, what?
No, I, I finalized the plans and sent those to him by email. I meant to bring a set for you guys tonight, but I walked out without parting-
When did you give it to Bill?
Our plans are dated, uh, August twenty fifth. I sent it the week after that, so.
Oh, okay, so just recently.
It, it might be that we just haven't-
Because I, I would be hesitant to close the hearing without his, hearing his comments on-
As I said, we should keep it open till we have a final report and then-
That's right.
Close it out and maybe ask him if he can to start drafting some conditions for us as we're going along, so that we'll be-
That would be good.
If we, if we can meet one more time, close it and get a decision going, that would be a pretty more effective use of our time too.
Yeah, absolutely.
What about the decommissioning figure? Has that been addressed yet?
We, we submitted the estimate, so it would just, it would just be at the board's decision, yeah, as to whether the amount is appropriate or not.
So it'd be part of Bill's report then? Right. Well, we can rely on Bill to calculate that for us, because there's nothing we can do.
Is it, is it possible to get some plans over to the, our office or town clerk?
Sure.
Town clerk's open more hours. Mike went to the town clerk.
Okay.
And then we could each pick them up and pull them up to the light, or we think we should.
Sure, I'd be happy to s- provide that final plan set too.
You look frustrated, Zach.
Yeah, I-
Must be another job, not this one.
Yeah, it is. It's just something on my mind. That Barry job is hanging up. Yeah, it's just, time, the timing's always tough on these, but we get it.
Are you interconnected yet?
I don't, I don't-
Interconnected.
Are you, are you interconnected with the grid or?
Oh, Barry's talking about.
Barry you're talking about?
Oh, what's? No, I did see, is, I, I, I don't, I know, I understand what you're saying. You want to be able to come over.
I understand both sides of it, yep.
We just don't have the information to do it. I mean, I don't see the-
I don't think, I don't think there'd be a major issue here, at least having that final report to wrap things up.
Yeah, I don't think there's been- It's just kinda a letter from Bill, some, like, confirming that it meets all the sections.
Yeah, it's, it's basically his final report.
Okay.
And maybe some suggested conditions for us to work with and just, you know, a suggestion on the decommissioning figure.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't see any other objections. It's not like we have-
Okay, I'll, I'll reach out to him and I'll go to meet him at his office, whatever we need to do.
It'd be great if we get that for our next meeting, so we can close the hearing and then get everyone to vote, and then maybe get a decision that night, and then we get you, get you up and running.
Right.
Do you guys have any major things or?
I have none, I-
I didn't be willing to have a separate meeting if that's what it takes.
The only thing is I don't know how soon Bill can have it ready. You know, we could say we have a meeting in a couple of weeks, but if he's not ready in two weeks, we'd have to have a meeting just to continue this meeting.
Yeah.
That's only drawback to that.
Can you live with the month?
Yeah, we have a big deadline on October fifteenth.
For this one?
For this one, so it sounds like we'd be first week of October, so I think-
Yeah, that'd give us time. And if, and if for some reason we had to-
Internal deadline or?
Have a working-
No, the policy deadline.
Oh, oh.
There's, yeah, it's a little-
Well, if we did our first meeting in October, for some reason we couldn't pull it all together that night, then we could have another meeting the end of that week at the beginning of October.
It's October, our next meeting is October fourth.
Okay.
Yeah.
We still have time to make it happen.
I'll just make sure that Bill's good with everything and has, has his report and proposed conditions.
He told me today he had not received any information from you guys about that.
Okay, he said he had been having trouble with emails, so maybe it just didn't go through. Files are large, uh, sometimes they get kicked back, but we usually get a message.
He lives in town, so he could pick them up too if he has to.
Okay, I'll, I'll get hard copies delivered here to the town offices and he usually, uh, is okay with email from, from me. So I can send him electronic copies as well.
I just feel obligated to enroll and look at them.
Sure.
I think we have to do it.
Uh, that's understandable.
Do you have any submission from Conservation that you wanna get on the record anyway? So we should have that as documented.
Yeah, I don't have the written order of conditions yet, but I'm, I'm happy to provide that once, once they give it to us.
Make sure you give it to Bill, so he can kinda incorporate that in with his proposed, um, decision.
Yeah, but he's doing, he's doing that with the Conservation Commission anyway.
Oh, so he already has it?
Yeah, he showed it, yeah, he, he, he's the one that's sure for the Conservation.
Okay, I didn't know that, okay.
Well, we just need it.
How, how does it work with the pilot program with our, with our work that we approve? I mean, we have nothing to do with that or?
Well, they won't start negotiations with the select board until we give them the green light, or give the select board the green light that you complied with everything that we've asked to do, that everything we've, we've seen, that it looks like it's gonna be a successful operation. Uh, much like we did on Gardner Road.
But I, I think what we do is we yell over to the Conservation Commission, are you guys all set? But I think we're the final ones.
Yeah, I mean, we have to have all that, uh, all those ducks land.
Well, the pilot requires the town vote, doesn't it?
No.
Pilot requires the town vote, but they can't negotiate the pilot until we give them the green light.
Right, but more than likely if we can wrap this up early on October, that there'd probably be time for negotiation before the special town meeting this fall.
We usually don't negotiate in the town meeting. The town meeting warrant article is something like authorize the board of selectmen to negotiate.
Right, you'll have to negotiate, then we'd have, have to have a town meeting vote, but it might-
Usually the vote happens first or?
Yeah, we've already had it, Mark. We, we had the town meeting vote in June to negotiate.
To allow them to negotiate?
Subject to the planning boards.
Oh, okay.
All right, so you already want to-
Oh, so we don't have to do that again?
Green light.
I thought, I thought it went backwards from that, so.
No, no, they've already done that, right.
Oh, right.
Also, the-
Oh, makes it easy for you.
Don't we get some kind of a certificate from the Board of Assessors?
You have to do the negotiating ahead of time.
Uh-
That says all the taxes have been paid and everything.
Well, that was, that was given to us when they applied.
That was in the application?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
Uh, how about the chapter sixty-one?
That's usually a condition of the building permit. We can't get the building permit without taking it out. And similar to the not wasting selectmen's time, we don't like to pull it out of chapter land until we know we're building it. So usually that applet, that, um, it's the request to not, what's it, what's it called? The, uh-
Change of use, isn't it?
First right of refusal.
It's a cha- first right of refu- first right of refusal thing.
First right of refusal. I don't think they have that anyways.
We haven't done it yet. We do it, um, we do it when we kinda have our construction timeline in sight.
Yeah.
Because if we took it out now, and then for some reason the project blew up or it didn't go, then our landlords would be kinda stuck with a mess about having to put it back in. There's a rollback tax, a considerable rollback tax, and probably for a project like this in the thirty to forty thousand dollar range that we'll pay the town for the five year back taxes. So we just don't wanna have that charge come up if we've not about to build it.
Yeah, obviously.
But, yeah, we'll definitely take care of that.
Makes sense.
Now, we have a, we have a town council ruling on that because of, of a lease situation?
A town council ruling?
We asked them what would be the, the process on this.
Yeah.
It's a change of use, but do you, but I'm not sure you have to give the town, uh, the right of first-
There was some discussion about that, was it you and I?
Yeah, the town doesn't get fir- first right of refusal because the town, is it, the owner's, is it changing?
You're not buying, it's not a purchase.
You have to pay the back taxes, but the town does not have-
Yeah. So I mean, it's more of just a notice of use change than anything.
Use change, back taxes, but-
Yeah, actually, that's what I remember. We were talking about on the sidewalk.
Right, and the town doesn't have the right of first refusal unless the land is sold for, for, for some sort of development.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
But they're maintaining the ownership of it, and I think they went to town council and-
You guys confirm that?
So that, that's gonna save us some time, because-
Well, there's a sixty, sixty, hundred and-
There's a sixty day waiting period, yeah.
Yeah, sixty day, no, a hundred and twenty day.
It's nine, it's up to ninety.
Is it? Yeah, okay.
And basically, we make the request, when we send the request in, the change of use request, in most towns, um, we send it to the assessor and the board of selectmen, and then we'll also copy the planning board, Conservation Commission, fire, um, no, not fire, uh, forester. And you guys will basically make a recommendation at some point to the board of selectmen to either, I guess, it would normally it's exercise your right of refusal or not.
Right.
In this case, you might not, it might be more of a notice.
I mean, you have to check, but I, I don't think anyone's gonna want it anyways. It's not that.
It's usually been a, an administrative step where no town has ever stepped in and said, no, sorry, no project, we'd rather own it.
But see, they're not selling it.
Exactly, yeah. It's, it's logically, I follow you a hundred percent.
Yeah, it's-
I'm not sure you're right, Tom.
I think I-
I'd like to agree with the letter from the lawyers.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we'll get that.
Yeah.
But either way, um, that, that is a process that happens after entitlement approval and prior to the issuance of the building permit.
I mean, I gotta re-
So somewhere in that window, once internally, we're like, okay, everything's a gr- a go, let's go spend the fifty thousand dollars removing, paying the back taxes. That's, that's when that happens.
Because it works the same time, like, if you, if you're one of your children, it's like with our farm, if one of our kids wanted to take some of our land out of sixty-one A and build a house, they can do that, and the town does not have right of first refusal.
Right.
If you wanna take some of your land and build another house on that, on that sixty-one A, the town does not have the right of first refusal. It's only if there's a change of ownership and a change of use.
Mm-hmm.
And if you take your lands under sixty-one and sell it to someone and it stays in the sixty-one, the town does not have the right of first refusal either.
So in this case, there's a change of use, but no change in ownership.
Yeah.
Right, right, right. Yeah, I, I kinda agree with that. I think that's the way it works.
Yeah, that's how it works. So you won't have that delay. That's good. All right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that'll happen, um, like we talked about, the pilot will be negotiated kinda in that period. Actually, the pilot sometimes can take all the way up to construction, but, um, in this case, we've already done a template now two times, so that, that should happen pretty quickly. Um, our final design, you guys have seen, or you will see the final nine or ten page set that moves to about a fifty or sixty page construction. Kinda put the erector set together type of plan, and that'll go to the building inspector and you guys and the Conservation Commission, all that, to make sure that plan is consistent with the plan you're approving for the project.
Have you ever had a site that you couldn't use the screw anchors?
No. Well, I mean, there's a site that we couldn't because we weren't allowed to, like a landfill, but we've never had a site where physically we couldn't use it.
Yeah, but I mean- Yeah.
Yeah, they can go through almost anything. They pre-drill if it's hard rock, they can still screw it in.
We've already done our Geotac subsurface testing for this site, and even though there's a, a lot of New England cobble, the, the bedrock is quite low, so we're not gonna be touching that.
New England cobble, excellent soils.
Giant, giant rocks, Volkswagen's.
It's kinda catchy though, New England cobble.
Yeah, I know.
That's one of those big friggin' boulders.
It's like your site over there in Gardner, it, uh, I've never seen somebody rock.
Yeah. Those big friggin' boulders. Let's go, we'll call it New England cobble.
So quaint.
You don't like those boulders in your backyard? Well, it's really New England cobble.
Like the, like the streets in Nantucket.
You can charge both of your houses, you can surround them by New England cobble.
All right, so.
All right, so next meeting is October fourth?
Yep, want a motion to continue the hearing?
Well, is that plan reasonable or?
Absolutely, yeah, sure.
Yeah, with the-
We gotta get, we gotta get big across on the T.
Our town meetings are twenty-fourth, but I'm not sure it pairs them.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just make sure that I reach out to him and finalize, make sure that everything-
He's right now, he's pacing it, so.
And, and if we can get it before the, you know, a week before the meeting would be good to-
Sure, I, I-
His conditions too.
I've got some field work tomorrow, but on Friday I'll go get the information produced and ready to come, so it should be here next week.
But the order of conditions-
All right, so the motion is to continue hearing until October the fourth at seven PM. Is that good for you guys? We'll keep that time and date. Okay, motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Reposed? So vote. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I should ask you guys a quick question before you send us on our way.
I have one for you too, before you go.
Okay. Um, we submitted a certificate of compliance for our Gardner Road projects. And our site super wants to close out the building permit. I didn't know if this board signs off on that. When they close it out, what's the process? Bill walked it with us recently, Bill Murray, and he had a few minor things that the site super has corrected on the site now. So I just wanted to understand the process for closing out the building permit, if you guys need to officially sign off on it, and if that has to come before you, or if that gets done behind the scenes, how that happens.
Well, that's one of the questions I was gonna ask you, because the Board of Assessors clerk gave me the notice from National Grid that you guys are online and ready to go. But what you need now is a certificate of compliance before you can generate. I guess you're already generating though, aren't you?
Well, we got the certificate to generate.
From us?
You got, yeah, you guys approved that and issued it before, and we recorded it in the registry, so.
Yeah, we've already done it.
Okay.
And you should be all set.
Yeah, um, so that's all that's needed from you then, is that, that permission. Okay.
Right.
Um, I'll make sure that Bill's okay with the minor things that he saw out there and make sure that it gets closed off. Um, I think that the, the Conservation Commission might be issuing our certificate of compliance from their standpoint on those Gardner Road projects tonight. So, um, I'll, I'll dig out the certificate to generate and, and make sure that I have provided a recorded copy back to you guys.
Yeah, 'cause I haven't seen that. It hasn't come into the office. That's why I question whether or not you've done it.
Yeah, you, you did it quite a while back.
And then we gave you permission to, uh, do your testing with National Grid. Is that what you're sitting, thinking of? Is that the same thing?
Um, you, you had done it in two steps, but we did that, they tested it, and we came back and requested the, the full permission to generate. Um, you, you had done it in two steps, but we did that, they tested it, and we came back and requested the, the full permission to generate. So, um, I'll pull it out of the files and.
You got a form?
Yeah, there was, you guys issued the, the certificate and we recorded it through registry, so I'll pull that out and send it back, um.
Yeah, Bill wrote, Bill wrote it.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
I'm, I'm a vote.
Yeah, I'll, I'll pull it out for the Gardner Road projects and make sure it gets provided back.
Anyone else coming up in Hubbardston? Anyone, any other projects?
I think some of our, one of our developers is working on a small project on a uh, little clay pit.
Yeah, Tysoe's.
Tysoe's.
Tysoe's pit.
Right down here on sixty-eight.
That's, that sounds right.
Yeah, that's the one I was giving, cause I gave him your, your numbers.
Yeah, it's a small, uh, I think it'd be like a, it'll be about this, a one megawatt project, um, in that pit there, so we're uh. We're at the earlier stages on that right now, working with the landowner to see if we can come to terms on a lease agreement before we move to the building stuff, but we're looking at that, that project, um. I think that's.
It's like twenty acres, something like that, fifteen acres?
The, the site's, the site's big, but it's, it's, there's the pit, the home, and then there's some backland, the, the backland is all wet.
Yeah, but.
Yeah.
And um, the pit's got a couple little old kinda areas, look like someone was playing around with an excavator or something like that, that have, that got a little bit wet, but. It's about a megawatt and a half, something like that, megawatt, megawatt and a half, I think that's, that's the one that we're working on.
Five acres.
Cause we're working with them about reclaiming the pit, which, that's why we gave him, or I gave him your name.
Yeah.
Is it?
Yeah, like the ones we were talking about in Gardner and in Winchandon, um, we've been working really hard on putting projects on those pits. Um, we looked at the one up in Pitcherville Road that is in Hubbardston, and um, there's a lot of natural heritage up there, and the uh. The lines, the utility lines are, are pretty beat up, um, so I don't know if it can take a lot more in that area. And then there was another pit on Gardner Road that we're looking at, Fletcher's Pit there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but that one again, natural heritage issues, I mean, it's, it's very hard for us to, to permit those projects at state level. Because what ends up happening is it turns into like a, a year and a half submissions and this and that, and every time it just ends with, yep, you guys can do the project, but there's a, a take fee. And they're usually in the range of a half a million dollars or something like that.
A take fee because you're removing land from the heritage?
Exactly.
Wow.
Even these things up on stilts?
Even up on stilts, even in an area that's disturbed, an old gravel pit, they're just, it's, it's very challenging, it's a very long and arduous process, and it always ends up into a massive.
Well.
Six, sometimes bordering on seven figure take, and it just, it cra- it crashes the economics.
I've never heard of a take fee.
Well, as a point of information, we just completed our permitting process on a ninety-six acre pit off of Pitcherville Road. Which had natural heritage features.
Yeah.
However, they did not encompass a full ninety-six acres.
Yeah.
That was what, fifteen acres?
There's some, there's some pieces out of it in there that.
Huge amounts out of it.
Yeah, that, the Pitcherville Road specifically, um, the biggest issue I have is the interconnection profile there, I think National Grid will be the ones that hit us with those six or, or high six, low seven million. Dollar upgrade cost, um, the one on Hubbardston, Fletcher's Pit, excuse me, Fletcher's Pit on, where is, where is Fletcher's Pit Gardner Road?
It's on Pitcherville Road.
It's actually not Fletcher's Pit, it's his brother's pit, it's called, it's part of Graves Concrete.
No. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's the one.
We're doing a couple pits for them over in, one in Athol, one in Winchandon, and so we looked at that one, and it, it's a great site, I mean, it'd be. Off that west side of the road, you'd never see it or hear it or smell it, and um.
Be a good use for it.
That's where the natural heritage has hurt me.
That whole area, they've expanded the national heritage too.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Are we talking about the one on the south side of Pitcherville?
There's Fletcher's Pit, but there's another being lifted, yeah.
Over by the flea market there?
Yeah.
That's the one.
That's Pitcherville Road, that's.
He act- they actually own from Gardner Road all the way to Ragged Hill.
Yeah.
And most of Ragged Hill.
On the south side?
Yeah.
Right, but they're talking about the north side, behind Rieta.
It's somebody, yeah, somebody, somebody put a, somebody put a project in that Pitcherville Road pit, right?
Brown.
There is one.
It's a small one, it's kinda right in the middle of.
Right.
Yeah.
The whole, all the good area.
There's another proposed one kinda cooking.
Yeah. Yeah, I remember, I think I talked to the gentleman who owned that, at that site at, at one of these meetings.
Yeah, Norman Braden.
The interconnect is, is the issue.
Yeah. And that's where, that's why I walked away from it, if somebody else is taking a crack at it, go for it, I certainly don't think, don't know if I'm right, I think I am, but. You know, we're hundreds of thousands of dollars into these projects, so when we see something that's bad early, we usually walk away from it. This particular one on Williamsville Road runs to the Berry Substation, which has, is a very, very robust substation, very twenty-two K V lines and all that type of stuff, so. We can interconnect without, without a ton, ton of cost.
And you could also, anyone else that wants to hook up, that lives on Williamsville, you know, there, there's plenty of space on the line.
Oh, yeah, even the, I mean, the residential projects, they don't even show up on the map, uh, for, uh, the utilities don't even do studies on them, they just say, go ahead, because those interconnect first behind the meter.
Yeah.
And it's only the export and the export, it's peanuts compared to a, a site like this that's a hundred percent export.
And the raw stuff, yeah.
Yeah.
So you were gonna get us some community solar information on those Gardner Road projects that we could distribute, we, we need that.
Yeah. Yeah, we'd love to.
People are interested.
Love to do more of the, the um, National Grid's challenge again with net metering and all that, all that jazz, but uh.
But the, how do people?
Well, can you just buy a share of it?
Of, yeah.
Can you just buy a piece?
Yeah, it's not so much a share per se, it's, you're an off taker, you buy five percent or twenty-five kilowatts worth of the off take.
Well, the. Yeah.
Well, that's what we wanna, wanna present to the, to the town, how do we do that? How do we get that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Individuals or the municipal, you know, the town.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, there's, there's two or three companies out there that are, you know, what I would define as reputable, that we work with, when we say, hey, here's our Gardner Road project, hey, Ben, I need five hundred people.
You're the generator, so there's a wholesaler in there, there's a layer of wholesalers?
Um, we call them aggregators.
Aggregators.
They're people that knock on doors, and they're usually people that are knocking on doors saying, hey, can I put solar on your roof?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, okay, we gotta clear all those trees so we can see your roof, and then they're like, no, I don't wanna do that, so that person goes on a list and be like, okay, we'll call you when we do a community solar project. That type of thing.
That's what we, we'd like to explore.
Yeah, let's uh, let me make sure I follow up on that with more, more detail, I know, I remember talking about that last time with you guys.
Great.
Cool.
Thanks a lot, guys, appreciate it.
Thanks, gentlemen, appreciate your time.
Good seeing you, Ian.
See you in October.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So motion reconvene?
Good night.
Second.
Second, all in favor, we're back in session, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Good night, Mark. Oh, you're staying?
No, I'm not. I've seen you. There's no further business I can conduct this evening, I'm outta here.
Oh, yeah, oh, good, once again, we certainly appreciate your attendance and helpfulness.
It's all my pleasure.
Yeah.
I think I have anything better to do tonight.
Except driving a rain.
We miss you so much.
Is it raining when you came in still, or?
Yes, yeah.
Oh, man.
Well, I hope it keeps up.
I came up one forty, I couldn't even see where I was going, it was terrible.
Well, I hope it keeps up, that way it won't keep, come down.
There you go.
See you all, yeah.
Good night.
Bye-bye, thank you.
More rain coming tonight, so.
John, how are you? You're looking good, kid.
Yeah, feeling good.
That's good, glad to hear it. Tired, are you?
Yeah, it's past eight o'clock.
Oh, good, oh, yeah, well, we'll get you out of here right away, I'll be kinda.
Yeah, we're running a little bit.
A little bit late, sorry about that.
It's okay. It was interesting listening to these guys.
They know their stuff, boy, it's.
Is this the uh, plan I dropped, what?
Uh, let's see. Well, this is the Barago file, okay. Eleven, John Prentice, did you bring the MyLan?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Now, you keep that, or is that?
Oh, we're gonna sign that for you, and you're gonna take it and put it on record. All right, so John has a piece of land off of New Westminster Road, and. That takes off on Prentice Hill, no less, and what we're doing is authorizing and confirming a right of way, is that what we're doing, John?
Yeah, when my father uh.
Wait a minute, timeout, are we supposed to be doing this? Because I don't see any endorsement play, is there a place for our endorsement on this?
What's that called?
That's for registry use only.
This is Doc's special, so I don't know what.
This is an eighty-one X.
What does that mean?
That basically is confirming that the lot lines are not changing. Let me just check your MyLan and see what they have there, I don't think you need to do this with us, I think you just need to put this on file.
Well, I wasn't sure, that's why.
Yeah, no.
Better safe than. Uh, you, if you recall, quite a few years back, my cousin Alan was gonna buy, uh, thirty-five acres that's in front of the two hundred. And he, Doc did a similar but a better layout, uh. And Doc couldn't find it, and it's taken me two years of uh, hassle on him to get this drawn up.
Mm-hmm.
After.
Well, wha- what we're doing, and what we're looking at, is a plan of land that is in existence, and that is not changing any boundaries. But adding your right of way, which is a, a granting on a deed, and he's done this, he's got the eighty-one X certification.
Right.
And the registry would certify when they put it in there, they, I think all you have to do, John, is take it to the registry of deeds and have it recorded.
Yeah.
So.
Sean, good evening.
It's something we're, you know, appreciative you've come in with us for, but we don't, we don't need to endorse that for you.
Now, is that a buildable lot?
Well, what it is, I got two hundred acres up in the back, and there's a lot in front of it, thirty, thirty somewhat acre parcel. That when my father, uh, did an A and R up there originally, he should have extended, Pitcherville Road starts. Uh, right there.
Yep.
And then he did a, a fifty foot up to the mound here, and I'm just extending that out to the two hundred, so there's access.
So, deed and right of way access to the backland is what it is, right?
Yeah.
So deed it right of way to another lot.
Right.
Right, yeah.
But my question is, is this stuff buildable? Or, or are these buildable?
Well, he has no frontage here.
No, there's no, there's no frontage in the town, might, hopefully, hope to do a solar farm up in the back.
Oh.
Eventually somewhere down the road, yeah.
They're pretty popular.
Out of sight, nobody'll ever see it, and.
Yeah, they don't make any noise, and.
Wish I had the connection to do a cell tower, so.
Yeah, that'd be good for everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think you're all set, John.
All right, so I'll take this and uh.
I really don't. Yep, you can take this, and you can have this back for you, um.
Are you still doing the forest legacy, or?
Do we wanna keep that just for a meeting minutes?
Are you still doing the forest legacy?
No, I don't think we need to.
For, the, the, the money for the state buying the land or the federal government? No, you're not doing that, no.
No, they, they.
Cause it'll be in file with the registry of deeds, you can look it up in the plan books.
You can keep that if you want, that's you all.
Let's throw it over Patty.
Yeah, we'll put it in the file.
And say, no action required by the planning board.
All right.
All right, John, well, thanks very much.
That was easy.
Keep smiling, gentlemen.
You too.
Always, I'm headed for Thailand in January.
Are you really?
Yeah, so, not too much, my daughter's getting married over there in February, got the whole family, except for the youngest boy's going over.
No kidding? Wow, that'll be fun.
Yeah.
So, John, off the record, I know we're on TV, but. Being the old product of the sixties that you are. With your memory, do you remember a guy out of Worcester named Roger Saloom, musician?
No.
No, okay.
Who, what band was he in?
He was a, just a folk singer, all by, well, he had a band called Saloom, Sinclair, and Mother Bear.
Oh, no. Sounds like he played at the Blue Plate, hold on.
Probably did, the, the meeting house downtown.
Leitrim's, Leitrim's, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, but anyways, just thought I might ask you.
No, we'll see you later, guys.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
All right, well, that was easy. Okay.
I couldn't find the uh. Senior Road List. On the town website.
It's on there somewhere, but I don't think Williamsville Road is on there, I just brought it up just to make sure we check everything. Cause we had a scenic road violation that came up on.
Yeah.
Come on.
The.
There's a lot of them.
Senior housing, senior housing.
Senior housing, oh, what's the name of that road down there?
Uh, Old West, Old Princeton Road.
Old Westminster Cut Off, right?
Old Princeton Cut Off.
Oh, Princeton, thank you, and uh. The problem was, we don't have, we don't know who regulates the enforcement for scenic road violations. Travis called me, and I saw, I spoke with Brian Bullock, and he was gonna check to find out who does it, Larry Brand, zoning officer, doesn't do it. We're in charge of.
Well, we give him permission.
We give him permission to open the stone walls, in this case, but they didn't open the stone walls, I mean, they didn't come to us to open the stone wall, they just opened up the stone wall.
If, if they come to us.
And put a driveway in, they didn't even get the driveway permit, the temporary permit, but we're at a quandary, cause we don't know who enforces and how to enforce it, so.
Is that something for October twenty-fourth?
I don't know, I, you know, I, I.
What does the zoning say about?
Doesn't.
Doesn't say, doesn't mention it, well, the zoning officer is Larry Brand.
Yeah, he's, he's not in charge of it, he says.
I don't know how he could not be, cause he's the zoning.
Well, it's not a zoning ordinance, it's a state law, and we accepted.
Oh.
The, the road as part of the scenic ways of the state law, and the problem is, there's a disconnect, we do all the authorizing for those scenic roads. People have to come to us for the public hearing, but when they don't come to us, and it's a violation, we don't know who's in charge of enforcing the violation.
What happens if they do violate it? What happens then?
That's the problem.
No, but, I mean, is there a fine, or do they have to put it back, or?
Don't know.
How, how do other towns do it?
I've asked Brian, he's gonna, he's researching it for us to find out, but that's.
That's a good question, yeah, that's interesting.
So if anybody comes up with an answer, you know, we'll figure it out.
It doesn't say in the law? Have you read, he must have read the law, so.
Yeah. Is, High Street's not a scenic road? I thought it was a scenic road, but I guess it's not. I don't know. Okay, so let's move along to our discussion on the bylaws.
You, we got that guy coming in at eight.
What guy?
Mike Tolman.
Well, he'll have to wait if he isn't here, cause that's seven forty-five we're late, I don't think he's gonna make it, quite frankly, but well.
Oh, he was on six, seven forty-five?
No, he's on at uh, eight fifteen.
Oh, 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 great.
What is up with all the, the times now? They're not on everybody's agenda.
Yeah, that's the way the state wants you to do it, so you get uh, some kind of cohesiveness for your agendas.
Right.
To be as descriptive as possible. So, um, Article nineteen, earth removal bylaw, proposed changes, I sent this around to everybody today. And this is. A result of the permitting that we did on the DJ Palm operation last month. And basically, it is a housekeeping issue where we're trying to. Make sure we have the correct references and. Change the parameters of the meeting. So let's go to Article nineteen, earth removal bylaw proposed changes, section, number one, section three definitions. In the sensitive areas of our bylaw, it references the Hubbardstons Act for Protection Favorability overlay district. Which references a map that is basically out of date.
Hey, can I make copies of this?
You're getting a copy.
Oh, Tom's got one.
Oh, that's only one side, just to say.
I got a.
Here's the other side, it's not in color.
Well, I got one in color.
Yeah.
So.
Do you have one?
I'll take the non-colored one.
I'll take the colored one.
Alrighty. So what we need to do is we need to update that map and that requires going to our zoning bylaw to change the definition. So we have to go to Article fifteen, the Aquifer, Aquifer Favorability Bylaw and update the reference to the Aquifer maps. Now, what it says now is it refers to the map drawn in nineteen eighty eight by IEP, which was the company that did the mapping and the master plan, which has been updated subsequent by the state through the GIS. So we need to change that and I spoke with.
Article fifteen.
Yeah, I spoke with Tom about it and the wording, did I bring my notes? Oh, man.
I didn't bring mine, I'm looking here.
Oh, man, I might not have brought my notes, hold on a minute. Wait, let me just look this over, cause we had a we had a good title for it, but. Oh, here we are. So.
Our current Mass GIS.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
This takes a little bit more of an explanation. So, Article fifteen is our Aquifer Favorability Protection Bylaw. The definition of which is referred back to Article two of our zoning bylaws, where we define the general terms in town. So, Article two, section two point six defines Aquifer Favorability Areas and that's what we need to change. When we change that, it will then automatically update the Earth Removal Bylaw and the zoning Article fifteen. Is that as clear as mud, is that what it is right now?
Well, Article two point six says Aquifer Favorability Areas.
Right, okay, so we're changing that definition and all we're going to do is update that from what it says here.
It says those areas as, as, as.
Shown as potential medium high yield Aquifer area on a map entitled Aquifer Areas Prepared by IEP Inc. dated nineteen eighty eight, which is hereby made a part of these zoning bylaws and shall be on file with the town clerk. So we're gonna change that, proposed, change that to on a map prepared by the, the, on the current Massachusetts GIS data layer for Aquifer protection.
And that, what, what this will do is it.
Alright, could, could you just read that sentence from the beginning? Those areas shown as, are we still interested in potential medium high yield Aquifer area?
Yeah.
Yep, on a map entitled.
Does that mean medium or high?
Medium and high, yeah, medium.
And high slash high.
We oughta make it say that, cause it's, I don't know if there's a medium slash high.
Yes, there is, on the map there is, the map shows it that way.
That's how the map shows it.
On the future map that we're gonna use?
Yeah, it's defined, all the maps show as it's defined.
The hyphen.
Okay, it means medium or high yield?
Med, medium through high.
Okay.
Cause it's a scale.
Alright.
So if you look at the map, you know, it's like five point one to six point one to three, so it's like.
Alright, so it's, I'm, I'm with you now, means through.
Yep.
On a map.
Shown as potential medium high yield Aquifer area on a map entitled Massachusetts GIS data, data, D A T A, layer for Aquifer protection.
So a current, it should be on a, on a, on the current map of Mass, the current Mass GIS map. So what we're trying to do is, this, like, if someone wanted this map, there's only, first off, there's only one copy of it and it's in the safe, okay, so when an engineer is designing a project, they would have to get out of their office, come to Hubbardston, ask Joyce to open up the vault, look at the map and then decide. Everything now is going to Mass GIS, which is a overlay mapping thing, it's basically the same information, but they have it all over the, the whole, whole world. So anyone with an internet can go on and just look at the map and be able to find, look at the map and be able to find where the Aquifers are, it's just a streamlined, basically.
So, by current, you mean in effect when the person looks, not in effect today?
Right, it's always up current, so if they up.
Well, it's both, really.
It's both, if they update this, it gets automatically updated.
Are we comfortable giving the, the power over to the state to upgrade the map, or do we wanna freeze it on today's map?
Well, they, they're the ones that are gonna do it anyway, they're, they're the ones that make the maps, so if they update.
We could freeze it on the two thousand seventeen version.
Yeah, but why would you wanna use outdated information, you know?
So is the map now the twenty seventeen updated, like this year they updated it?
I think it was two thousand fifteen is the last time they updated.
When's the last time they did before that one?
I think it's, I have like seven maps going back, so it's been going, they, they update them
On a regular.
On a regular basis. So they have that, this Mass G I S, are you familiar with GIS?
A little bit.
Yeah, they, they update all these maps all the time, you know, so when they get population data, I was on, on that website today and you can get the population of Hubbardston, you know, from nineteen eighty to ninety, two thousand, two thousand ten. So it's always, it's a, it's a, always an updated thing. So this gives, it's basically keeping us up to date and modern with this stuff.
Right, the reason I'm being a stickler is that if we pass a motion tonight to accept this, we gotta have the real wording.
No, we don't, what, what, I'll work on that right now, but I'll explain that as well.
Oh, okay, please.
So, my suggestion is we rewrite two point six to read, those areas shown as potential medium to high yield Aquifer area on a map entitled quote, low, medium and high yield Aquifers, unquote, end quote, as published by the Mass GIS data system.
Yeah, that sounds right, yeah. I can send you the link to that, if you like?
Yeah, if you want, that'd be cool.
Yeah, there, you can take a look at it, yeah.
And that would then delete the IEP map and would not make it official. Now, I spoke with, would take that away from being official and I spoke with Bill today about this and what he will do to add to this motion will be to print the map, overlay it on Hubbardston, so we have what we want in mapping form as well.
That's, that's today's snapshot?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And, and we have another meeting before the town meeting to finalize the words.
What we'll do is this. I guess I'll back up all the way. The process we are doing tonight is the beginning of a bylaw change, whether it be general or zoning. Bylaws can be changed by a recommendation from the planning board or by citizen petition or by a recommendation from the select board, who may also change bylaws. And from ours, our board, we would make a proposal, sending it to the Board of Selectmen, asking them to send it back to us to hold public hearings and be included on the town warrant for the next town meeting. That's the process.
And can we do that by the October twenty fourth meeting?
When they send that back to us, we can then schedule the hearings. If we don't get it scheduled in time for the October twenty fourth meeting, then we'd have to schedule it for the next town meeting, which would be June, I guess, unless they had one earlier.
And the October twenty fourth meeting isn't set in stone yet either.
Yes, it is.
Oh, it is now? Oh, it is.
Okay, so we're, we're trying to beat that deadline, if they, the next meeting is the what, the fifteenth?
Two weeks from last night.
So that would have been, whatever it may be.
The, the uh, four plus, four plus fourteen.
Eighteenth.
So twenty, eighteen.
Okay, so the eighteenth, they'll receive that and all they'll say, or they should say, is that we accept it, send it back to the planning board. Once they do that, we schedule the hearings. The hearings have to be held, in fact, as long as the hearing is held before the town meeting and a report written for the town meeting to, to vote, vote on, it can be held the same night as the town meeting.
Do we have to give two weeks' notice?
We do.
So we could actually schedule the hearing and give two weeks' notice for the hearing, even before the selectmen meet? If we had to?
No, we wouldn't do that, we wouldn't do that till they send it back to us.
Why not? Just making an announcement.
The process is, that's how the process is, they, they have to send it back to us before we can schedule anything. As I understand.
I could see where you, I could see where you would have to send it back to us before we could actually have the hearing, but I don't know why we couldn't schedule.
Oh, I should just schedule it for the nineteenth, so.
Yeah, twentieth, twenty fifth, well, not twenty fifth, twenty fifth.
Yeah.
Well, this is September, yeah.
Yeah, so we could cancel it if they don't send it back.
Yeah, just, oh, don't know.
I suppose that could work.
Then maybe we should attend the eighteenth to try to explain what the heck we're doing.
Well, you'd have to, yeah.
So.
Okay, sounds like a plan, even if, even if they send it back to us on the nineteenth, we have two weeks in there to.
We have plenty of time, we have six weeks. The meeting's October twenty fourth, not September.
Well, you don't have six weeks.
Hey, if it's September eighteenth, well, five weeks.
So that's all we need is two. And the, the timing can be such that the hearing can be conducted on the same night as the town meeting. So you have that latitude, you know, we don't have to have it a week before the town meeting, we can have it the same night, the same day.
But we'd like to. We'd like to have it earlier.
But the other thing happens if for some reason that meeting doesn't take place, it's October twenty fourth and it has to wait till June, it's all done.
Yeah, it's all done.
It's just waiting for a town meeting to occur.
But it's not in effect, is it?
No, not in effect till town meeting votes on.
That's why I was trying to push Monarch USA to get us the zoning for marijuana stuff, but that doesn't.
Oh, that's not gonna work for October.
No, no, I thought it might, I thought they had added to this meeting, but obviously it's not.
Well, let's make it a goal to have it by the October twenty fourth.
Oh, sure, that's what we're doing, yeah, that's what we're doing. So that is the proposal and we would enclose the map system that Bill Murray would bring with us for that, okay?
Right.
And then we could send that off to the, um.
We have to send it to the attorney, after that too, we have to send it to the attorney for the wording, so they may tweak the wording.
Yeah, they may, but they never do, we, we do pretty well with it. Okay, so.
So that was the first one.
That's going to be Article nineteen and going back to uh, Article two of the zoning bylaws. So when we change that, then that will then effectively reference the Article nineteen bylaw of the general bylaws, okay? The next change would be proposed section five, Existing Operations.
So, oh, wait a minute, are you gonna change the sensitive area? That's the same wording, this is page twenty nine.
I got twenty nine here.
We'd have to reference, right, on, the sensitive areas on page thirty one, let's go to that. This is complicated. On page thirty one of the general bylaws. After we change the zoning two point six.
Sensitive areas receptors.
I've got mine here.
Yeah, I've got it, I just put it in the wrong place, Tom, here we go. On page thirty one, where it says sensitive areas page thirty one subsection three.
Oh.
B. Okay, areas delineate, delineated on the town of Hubbardston's Aqua, Aquifer Protection Favorability Overlay District. That is the effective change, we leave that as it is, but it would be changed because that refers us back to
Five, which refers you to two.
Fifteen, which refers you to two.
Or fifteen.
Okay, so you're not really changing the wording there.
No, that's, that's.
You're just referencing, that's what you, that's.
Correct, it's still gonna be in the overlay district.
Yeah.
But the overlay district would then be redefined under two point six.
Okay.
That make sense?
So you're not gonna have, this, this, this wouldn't be a change.
No change.
No change to the article, okay.
It's just a reference.
Okay, I can get that, okay, got, okay.
So in section five, Existing Operations, on page thirty two.
No, we're, we're done with Aquifers, right?
Uh, right, we're still in the Earth Removal Bylaw.
Yeah, but we're done with Aquifers, that's all we have to do?
Yes. We would change section five to read section five period dash existing and pre-existing operations.
We're gonna add pre-existing.
So we would be adding pre-existing to that section five title.
Can we just use the word and, existing and, pre-existing operations?
If you choose, if you'd like. Like and, that and a slash?
Yep.
You do? Okay, works for me. Everybody happy with that?
Yeah.
Alright. I love you. So we're doing existing and pre-existing operations and in the first paragraph where it says after existence. Hi, how you doing? Add after existence. Where am I?
All Earth Removal Operations in Existence or which pre-existed.
Or pre-existent, or, and pre-existing. So we talking at the change two, Tom, is that what you're looking at?
Well, um.
After, after existence.
I think my and needs to be an or. They're two distinct things.
Yeah, existing or pre-existing.
Or pre-existing operations. Now, Vince, you're gonna have to make a sentence out of that.
No, it's a title, Tom, it's, if you look at the bylaws, he's changing the title, which is underlined.
Yeah. I'm in, I'm in the thing that says first paragraph.
Oh, okay.
Why not, you know, right?
Add. No, it's right here, Vince, right here, this is where I think you meant it. All Earth removal operations in Existence.
Yes, in the first paragraph, all Earth removal operations in Existence.
Or which.
Or which pre-existed, so that's where it would go. Okay? Or which pre-existed in Hubbardston on the effective date of this bylaw shall be subject to the requirements stated herein according to the following. Okay? And then in section B we would change existing operations without permits to pre-existing operations without permits.
Just add the pre in there. Okay? Yeah, these are just technical, these are just technical changes, yeah.
Um. It's just, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanna read it and see if that does it. So A is the existing and B is the pre-existing.
Right.
What is the definition of a pre-existing as used in B? That distinguishes it from an existing.
It's, it's been operated as a, an Earth removal place, I would imagine.
Pre-existing is defined. Do we have wifi in this room?
Yes.
We do, but I don't have the, the code.
It's a verb to exist beforehand, to exist in a previous state or to exist prior to something or someone else to proceed.
So a pre-existing is something that existed but no longer currently exists? And A would be those that currently exist?
Right, yes.
Okay.
Okay? And then sec, number three would be in section eight. Application and Public Hearing Process in Section D on page thirty four. We would change the thirty days that we have to make a decision to sixty days.
That would be good.
I think we all know why we did that, so we box ourselves in like we did last time. Okay?
Although, you know, the last time our, our very frequently meeting and working to a deadline actually helped us.
It did, there's no question about that, but there's, there's certain situations where if we can't establish a quorum, we're out of luck.
Yeah, we, we wanna expedite. Yeah.
So we, we.
I like the time, I just don't wanna take it.
Yeah. That's fine, you don't have to, up to.
Yeah.
Okay. To, now, that concludes
Yeah, can I see?
The, the proposed changes, okay? Following up with the Earth Removal Bylaws. We also have, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Before we leave the, the bylaw and I've, I've lost my little yellow sticky, but, um there was a phrase used adjacent. Um, those things are adjacent to sensitive areas, I believe.
Sensitive areas.
And we asked Bill what, what adjacent was and he you know, th- there's contiguous lots and then there's things that are adjacent. Because he went all the way from, all the way out through Route sixty eight and, you know, we went adjacent, meaning in the area.
Does that mean the sensitive receptors, is that where you meant, meaning it?
I believe it was, because I believe he was talking about, um, the senior housing at, uh, Madison Green. Madison Green. In that, in that case. And are we satisfied with the use of the word adjacent?
There is no use of that, there's no.
I don't see it, then.
Exist in that. Sensitive receptors or.
Sensitive areas.
Adjacent is not in any one of those, or either of those.
Gee, it must've been in, in his write-up rather than in the law. I, I had a little sticky in here to find adjacent. But I, I don't know what it stepped to.
It's, uh, section four, number D, uh, letter D. No earth removal operation shall be permitted adjacent to any sensitive receptor or area unless mitigations. Can be implemented, which in the opinion of the board will serve to protect such areas as approved by the planning board. Page thirty-one.
Yep, very good spotting.
Good one.
We happy with that?
That works for me, it gives us lots of latitude, quite frankly. Adjacent is.
Adjacent's like near.
Yeah.
Then how do you define near? Well, that's up to the person making the decision.
Alright.
Alright, so let's move on then. We'll go to the earth removal rules and regulations, because not only do we have the bylaw, we have the rules and regulations. Now, this we can change without town meeting approval. We need to do that only with a public hearing, so I would recommend. Adding to our rules and regulations, section one. B, plan requirements, to section one site plan, add. Letter Q, narrative discussing the proposed end. Slash, future uses of the land upon the conclusion. Of the permitted earth removal operation and its reclamation. The proposed uses must conform to all existing town of Hubbardston general and zoning bylaws. I'd like to see that in the site plan, so that we know what we're, what the future plans are after. A gravel removal operation is concluded.
So just give me an example of what they would, they could say, that's gonna be used.
Well, they could say that at the conclusion of the extraction of the gravel, we'll convert this to a solar farm. Or we'll convert to a residential development, or senior residential development.
What if they don't know?
Well, that's what we're trying to do, is make them think, so that they have some future thoughts, so that. When you're doing a reclamation situation, you're gonna reclaim it with a goal in mind. It's not just gonna be a wasteland. Just a forest.
Or, or they could just agree to the statement. That they will convert it to something that's acceptable.
Yeah.
And, and not contradict zoning bylaws.
You know, the situation we have at Marinelli's was, was, we have a mystery operator who will come in and run a mystery operation. Basically.
And leave it in a mystery condition.
Yeah. Now, this is part of our rules and regulations, not part of the bylaw, so there's a lot of latitude with those. But it makes the applicant have some kind of sense of what's going on, he's just not gonna walk away from it.
Is there a reason we wouldn't put this in the bylaw itself?
Well, the bylaws are more difficult to change. The rules and regulations are, are at our discretion.
They're our working tool.
Right. So, we can, we can set that up at a later date, but I would say that we probably will do it along.
If we're doing all the other hearings, yeah.
Yeah, the same timeframe.
Answer the same questions for the same people, really.
Okay.
I'm okay with that. Oh yeah, she left that for, for you guys, yeah.
Okay, any, any, any questions on anything so far?
No.
Alright, so the last one I have is a proposed change to general bylaws. Chapter sixteen, streets and sidewalks, page twenty-four, section one, general reg- regulations. And to section one point two, after the next to the last sentence, add a new sentence that would read. A cash security of one thousand dollars shall be deposited. With the town of Hubbardston, I changed that, the, the, to with. With the town of Hubbardston before the restoration. After twelve months, uh, the director of public work shall inspect the site of disturbance. To determine if there has been any settling due to improper or poorly filled and compacted restoration of the hole. The director shall have the person slash company who did the restoration returned to make corrections. Use the money on deposit to do the work properly, or return the money if there has been no settling or need for repair.
So that's.
Now, I had this thought, I actually have it on a daily basis when I drive through. City of Worcester, and the town of Holland, and everyplace else where the settling has occurred, and there's been a disruption in the street for either a. Sewer pipe, water pipe, whatever it is, and you hit that bump. Bump after bump after bump. We don't luckily have. Water and sewer at this point, so we don't have a lot of disturbance in the roads, but it's basically a future. Future preparation.
What do you think, Craig? I mean, you're the highway supervisor.
That's the man, yeah, there's, I'd ask. That's only. Regulated to the street disturbance, right? Oh, I agree with it, I mean, you drive across, just, I know in Princeton, they just put a, uh, well, not just, but. Put a development in, just freshly paved it, then Verizon called and said they had the dig. So they dug, now you drive past it and it drops like this much, you know, nice bump.
I'll go into Templeton on the new Templeton Road.
Yeah, right here in Main Street were Verizon's.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I totally agree with that.
And, and you know. The opposite is true, because we've got a section on Route sixty-eight that I think Highway did, many years before you were here, even before I was here. Where the septic system crosses under by the cemetery. Goes from west to east, and that's, that's held up very, very well. Because it was compacted right, so I, I think it's just a resolution to a potential problem that I don't. Wanna see happen, I'm just tired of those holes.
That was done, that was done by a contractor.
Was it?
They ran that whole pipe and.
Yeah.
Did a good job.
Crossed the bridge and crossed the road and.
Did a good job.
The other thing too, is they're getting ready to do Route sixty-eight, and we don't wanna anyone digging up the road and not fixing it properly.
Okay, is, is a thousand dollars enough, though?
I don't know.
No. Does he get a shovel in the ground?
I was thinking the same thing, they'd be like, keep a thousand.
Yeah, right.
You gotta say that bad, is that right?
Well, to motivate, to mobilize all the, you know, the machines to get there, a thousand bucks, you know, it's not much.
And you can't do much with a thousand.
Tell me how much, I don't know, I don't care, doesn't matter to me.
Six, seven?
I don't know.
Five would probably hold them to it, maybe make it worth it for them to come back. If you're holding five of their money, they'd wanna come back for, to get it. A thousand, they probably wouldn't. If it were me.
Let the phone ring.
That's it, yeah. Well, but you know, you know they've moved on to other projects, and they've got money coming in. Correct, you know what I mean, they're, they're making money elsewhere, they're not gonna come back for a thousand when they're making ten thousand over there, you know, so.
Well, should we change it to five? Everybody, I mean, we're not doing anything but proposing this.
I'm not a favored contractor, that's what I would do.
You're gonna blame what your name is? As, as proposed by.
You know what else I've seen too, is they, you make them tag their patches, you know, like when we, I do a lot of work in Boston. Everybody who, everybody who digs the road, you have to register with the town, and they give you the tags. When you do your patch in the road, you put your, your patch in it, so you know who did that patch, so if that's not acceptable, you, you, you look at the patch and you call them.
Yeah.
That's how they usually do it down there, then they can always figure out who didn't do a good job on the patch in the road.
We, we don't have a lot in our roads, you know, running under them.
Right.
We don't have a lot of roads that aren't patched.
Hard to tell the road from the patch.
I, I noticed that we just did Route sixty-two over two years ago, we patched it this summer, huh, Craig? They, what do they call that, they?
Where all the cracks are?
Yeah.
Ceiling, ce-.
Yeah, it's, uh, dry blank.
Yeah, and I meant if they cut the road out, and they have to like pour a new, you know, I mean, like you said, they cut it out, they put a culvert under the road. They compact it, they fill it, they base it, they top it, and then they gotta put a stick, you know, one of their little patches right in the pavement. So you go back a year later, if that thing's dropped an inch, and guess what, we know who did it, come back and fix it. But again, how do you get them to come and do it, and it's a, you know, a big mess, so. But that's how they do it down there, and it works for them.
Five grand enough?
Yeah, let's try it.
Alright, I don't know how to word that.
I don't think we have to do the patches thing, it's a great suggestion, and I'd do it in Boston, but.
You could remember, you know, and you have.
Two of years.
Right.
Well, the highway chief, maybe the highway chief, the guy down, what's, what's his name?
Travis.
Travis could just put that in his procedures. That's probably where it should be, it doesn't have to be in a town.
Yeah, like a disclaimer in their contract that says, you have five years, you own this patch, or whatever. Write that in, and then if they don't, you know, they don't make good on it, then it's a legal issue, you know, they don't come back and fix it.
Okay, good. So I make a motion that we accept these changes, uh, to be sent to the select board?
Well, we, we're gonna actually send him the bill, aren't we, and he's gonna.
No, he's just gonna supply us with the map, that we're gonna add to what our proposal is.
Okay.
Second that.
So that's what we'll do. Understand what we're gonna do?
Yeah.
Proposal, okay. All in favor of sending these proposed bylaw changes to the select board, so they can. Send them back to us to hold the public hearings, and put them on the agenda for the next town meeting.
With a friendly amendment that you will touch them up and.
Yeah.
And get the paperwork done.
Yeah, I'll write them all up.
Okay.
All in favor, you know, opposed, so vote, great. You scared of that? Nothing bothers me more than driving through the city of Worcester.
I go to Templeton, I need to get a, get a new truck.
Alright, so that's done, that's, that's the next one. My guess is, you're Michael Tolman, one of us. Well, we're late, so we're gonna take you and put our open meeting law discussion on last, I'm sorry, we're late this morning. I'm sorry, you and Michael?
Yes.
Great, what would you like to do, Michael? I know we spoke on the phone.
Little addition on the house.
The addition on the house, yeah, right. Lay it out for us, tell us what you wanna do.
This whole story started with Larry, obviously, 'cause I hold the permit for him, he's a friend of mine, he's a foundation contractor, I'm a carpenter. So we've done a lot of work together, we wanted to, you know, he's got a portion of his house, really, really old, I don't, I forget when it was born.
We used the road, no.
Yeah.
Orange shirt road.
Built eighteen hundreds, so the stone foundation's failing, something's gotta be done, give or take, you know, we've got a hardship there, it's literally like sagging. Cabinets are riding downhill, so all we wanna do is, and I've got some plans here, they're a little rusty on the outside, but they're clean on the inside. Is take the twelve by eighteen kitchen bump out that's there now, and make it sixteen deep. And keep the front edge, 'cause you'll see on here that front edge is like literally way too close to the, to the property line. We're talking about right here, so that's our non-conforming situation right there. So we wanna go four feet further into the backyard where he has a mile of room, but we don't, we're not gonna move that corner. One iota, we're gonna, we're gonna hold that spot.
Is there a house like right next to it there too, it's like.
Yep.
Yeah. Ten feet, you know.
Yeah, yep, beyond the property line, they're, they're gonna have the same issue if they ever try and do anything, same exact issue, but reversed.
Okay, so the reason that these gentlemen are here is because this is a non-conforming situation. Meaning that the house is not conforming to the sideline setbacks of thirty feet, I believe, which we have in our.
I think years ago, the two houses were actually connected.
Oh, back then, really? Yeah.
That's what Mrs. Nims told me about.
Oh, this is Mrs. Nims' next door?
Yeah.
Okay, so we just had them last month.
Yeah.
They came in, you saw them. Alright. So, because they're non-conforming, grandfathered use. The only way they can get the building permit to do the work they wanna do.
In the back.
In the back, is to have the building inspector deny the permit, and then come to the planning board for a special permit, granting that permission.
We have the denial letter in there, she was nice enough to provide us with a copy of that.
This is. The process, you give us the denial letter, you should fill out a Form A and a special, special permit application. Which will certify that you owe no taxes, you have to have the tax collector stamp that.
Yeah, we've done that, they're gonna run our article, um, the nineteenth and the twenty-ninth, so we missed the, we missed the cutoff for them to get. Um, the building, uh, well, actually, she told me that the planning board, after we paid the fee, would run the article, right.
Oh, I'm sorry, Patty told you that.
Yes, would, would run the article in the Gardener News as, you know, and then the letter, the abutter's list we have, she's. Or she told me that you guys are nice enough to take care of that as well, 'cause other towns, I've had to actually physically. Mail them out and get the certified mail, et cetera, et cetera.
You have to pay for it, but we'll take care of it.
Exactly.
And so. This is simply the process that you guys have to do. The application, the fee, the abutter's list, the, which we will then mail out. And then we will advertise the hearing, and as I told Patty the other day, the biggest problem is. The Gardener News requires a minimum of four days' notice. So we have to have fourteen days before the hearing, plus the four days that the Gardener News requires. So, I believe this whole mechanism is in motion.
Right.
So once you pay the fee for the newspaper and the mailing. We're in Fat City.
Okay.
So.
How much is that, can I pay it now?
Well, well, I'll call Patty, yeah, Patty will help us with that, and I think we paid, I think, just the permit fee, and.
I think the permit's fee's a hundred and fifty.
Yeah, she had a record in here of what we paid.
I paid that.
She told me she was gonna, she was gonna, uh, drop off this nice envelope for us with what has been done so far.
Well, that's good.
Peter Garapi, you look awfully familiar.
Peter, I'm sitting here looking at you.
Did I do your turret? I did your turret on your house, right, I did the shingles on your turret, uh, uh, right around the corner.
No, no.
Oh, Tom, right, 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 that's another guy, I did a turret over there, uh, we did your rubber roof.
Rubber roof and.
Correct, yeah, exactly.
Twice, 'cause I ripped the chimney out.
Right, not because we didn't do it right. When you say that, everyone gets alarmed, you know, you did it twice.
No, you did a great job.
Yep, no, that was a great job, you fed us lunch, and, uh, you were, you were a great, uh, host.
My wife fed you.
Yeah, well, we, we had the shade, we had the tent up, and we had lunch under the tent, it was a great, uh, you were a great host. Project came out good?
No conflict of interest here now, and your wife made those cookies.
They were submarine sandwiches, and they were delicious.
You still remember it, huh?
Oh, absolutely. I remember everything about the job, I remember that you had, uh, you know, you, uh, had. An elderly gentleman who was doing great work, and it was plodding along, yeah, it looked, it was looking good.
He's the elderly gentleman.
He said he would've been a lot done, done a lot quicker if I hadn't helped him.
Right.
Okay, so this looks good, um, we'll just go ahead and set up the. Uh, hearing, miss September, obviously, so we should be able to have it in October.
Okay.
October the fourth. Um, you know, I'll double check the dates and everything, but, well, actually, I can do that right now, I have my calendar with me.
Easy night, October fourth.
There's another full set of this, a clean set, this is the one I've had in my truck, but Larry has a full set. And another plot plan that I submitted with the original permit application that was denied eventually. Um, so if you don't care to hang on to this wrinkly one, he does have another set, but if you let me know when the hearing comes, if everybody wants their own set, we'll provide that. Whatever you guys need.
Okay, so we're gonna advertise that on the nineteenth and twenty-sixth, which will give us. Just the right amount of time before the fourth.
Perfect. I think Patty might've said she already had it scheduled to go in.
Uh, I went over this with her the other day.
Oh, okay.
We should be good, yeah, that's, that's exactly.
This evening, and she said, call me back, and I missed her, I called her at like five fifty-eight, and she was, you know, I didn't, I, I was.
She was over here.
She was here.
Oh, she was here.
Yeah, I called too late, yeah, I should've called her earlier, but.
Well, that, that works, because it doesn't matter when, we could advertise it the twelfth and nineteenth, but we'd still have to have the meeting on the. The hearing on the fourth.
Right.
That's our next meeting.
But as long as we've advertised previously, we're covered for the meeting, so.
So you're all set, so we have a seven PM. Solar farm hearing, and I think we can probably get a seven thirty PM hearing for you folks.
Great, seven thirty, October fourth?
Yep.
We have Bill's report.
Oh, yeah, if we have it ahead of time.
It might, it might go good, or it might take an hour.
I can, I can.
Well, we kept you waiting tonight.
I understand how these things go. It's no problem.
I can, I can start a hearing late, but I can't start it early.
If we have to wait a little bit, that's not a problem.
Rather have it set up and have you wait. Not that I want you to wait.
Long enough. If we get it done, that's fine.
If I, if I've done it seven twenty, we're gonna sit here anyway, 'cause I can't start it early.
No, I understand.
Okay.
Not a problem.
Anybody clear on this? All set? Um, and that's what we'll do. We'll see you on the fourth.
Have you talked to your neighbors about it already, or they don't?
Ah, I don't think anybody's gonna know.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, they're
They're doing work next door and they get along well, so I don't think
You know, the public hearing, basically, uh, we conduct the public hearing, but it's in the public's interest, so you never know what to anticipate when people come in and say what they wanna say about hearings.
Right.
You know, and if they come at all, correct?
Right.
So.
Yeah, I've been down this road a few times.
Worry about this.
Do you still have your rubber roof partner?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Nick and I are going strong, yeah. Going strong.
The copy for you, or is this ours?
I
I believe she left that for us, but you could certainly have it.
No, she said she left that for them.
I've gotta touch base with Patty anyway, because I've gotta make sure that the fees have been paid for the paper and for the abudders. I know we paid for the abudders list, but I don't know if the paper has been paid for. So I'm gonna touch base with her. It'll probably be Monday, 'cause I think she comes back in at the beginning of the week. And then, you know, if everything's in order, then if, if, you know, that's fine. And if we need another copy, I can easily have her email me a copy of those documents if you wanna hang on.
Yeah, we got a little time, 'cause we won't, you know.
So you guys are welcome to hang on to those ones, is what I'm saying, 'cause I'm gonna talk to her again and I could, for her to generate another copy of those is no, is no problem.
That way she has it as, and if, when you come back in, if this is the extra copy, she'll give it back to you.
Yep, exactly. And like I said, in the meantime, if we need another copy, she can churn one out for me, no problem. So, yeah, this is, uh, this is it in a nutshell. This is the existing, I think. Let's get to, uh, the nuts and bolts of this stuff. I'm upside down.
I don't, I don't want you to leave that with us. I want you to bring that tonight.
Like I said, Larry has a cleaner set that I already submitted. Um.
Okay.
Where's the, uh?
Are we doing the whole house?
No.
Nah, just
There's the kitchen.
You're holding that corner.
We're holding that front corner and we're just adding a master bedroom above, which won't change the footprint beyond that four feet that goes out behind. That four feet's gonna be interrolled and make the kitchen a, a usable space.
Yeah.
A pretty big little project.
Yeah, yep. It'll be interesting, 'cause the rafters are old logs and, you know, it'll be, you know, that's what I do.
That's good.
Yep.
So, that's what we'll do. I mean, that, that should be.
That's great. And like I said, I mean, there was a preliminary. We were on the docket as a, you know, kind of a hash mark preliminary hearing anyway. And if, uh, you know, my goal tonight was to see, if you guys wanted me to bring anything specific to the October fourth meeting, um, then now would be my chance to make sure that I could get it all in order, show you everything you need to see, so that we can hopefully nip it in the bud in October and still have time to pour the foundation for the, with the winter comes and get the thing off, you know?
Keep in mind, at the end of October, fourth meeting, there'll be a twenty-day appeal period that'll begin.
So we'd have to wait for that.
Right, and, uh, this is coming into a situation where we'll have to make some changes. Because we meet on Wednesday nights and Patty is off on Thursday. So we'll have to get, maybe you can take it into, uh, Joyce to get a timestamp the next day.
Yeah, I could do that, yeah. Person, uh, that had a foundation last year, and we had a special meeting for him to
Oh, that was Dave Tat.
Get him in under the weather.
Oh, that was for his A and R.
Well, it pushed his foundation into, into warmer weather rather than running into the winter and going over to the spring.
Yeah, we, we don't have any problems doing any of this.
Yeah.
You know, I, I think of maybe you I spoke to on the phone about it all.
Yes, yeah, we spoke on the phone.
It's all timing. It's all state law and the Gardener News.
And the process and just, and that's what we wanna do, is we wanna make sure that we don't, you know.
Do it before the snow flies.
Right, and we, but we also don't wanna, you know, step on the gas when we should be in neutral, you know what I mean?
That's fine.
'Cause this guy, like I said, is a, is a con- is a foundation guy. That's what he does. So as soon as we get the okay, we'll rip that thing down and we'll have the foundation in in a week, you know, so.
Larry's, Larry's the man in charge of everything, so, you know, we, we go along with what he says and that's it, so.
Yep. Yeah, and I had a lot of conversations with
We'd have it next week.
We were on the borderline with this, Larry and I. We were, we were, he read me the bylaw and, you know, he was you know, as long as you're not expanding the existing footprint by more than fifty percent. We were nowhere near that, so we were okay there. But it was just so close on the setback that it just, he said he didn't feel comfortable pulling the trigger with a normal permit. And I said, I understand, you know, it is what it is. So, you know, like I said, we've, we've talked about it a lot. I think once you guys give the okay and he sees how we progress, he's gonna be more than happy, you know, and, uh, we won't have any problems with him.
Well, that, that's how it works.
Yeah, exactly, so.
Pretty much a good system.
I've done a ton of work in Barry, and I grew up in Barry. I've done a lot of work in the surrounding area. I did a roof of his, uh, so we'll, yeah, we'll be, we'll be in good shape once we get rolling.
Very well, thank you very much.
Thanks for your time, gentlemen, and, uh, we will see you October fourth. Nice to see ya.
Nice meeting you, Mike.
It's me. Alright, guys.
See you later. Good night, Al.
Were you guys located in Barry, or?
My, uh, shop's in Worcester now. I live in Spencer, but actually, we did, we did a job over on Hell Road, I think, a couple of years ago, uh, for the DeMara's. We did a siding job and new windows and stuff over there. That was, so I've done a few jobs in town. But most of my work, ten, trends down towards like Framingham, Boston. You know, but, uh, when my buddy calls me, I, I come back out and go to the special permit hearings and help him out.
Jump through all the hoops that the town of Hubbardson puts in.
Well, everybody does. I just did one in Sturbridge. It was like an act of God to build a deck on, uh, Cedar Lake. I mean, it was real deal out there, 'cause they're like, you know, historical to the max with, you know, they, they have Sturbridge, uh, Old Sturbridge Village in town, so now everything is like under a, you know, you can't touch anything. It was I've never seen a process like that. They eventually agreed to build the deck. Uh, we had to create a, um, a substrate underneath, which was, you know, non-intrusive, so stone underneath the deck, okay, no problem. And you also have to plant two blueberry bushes down by the lake. Okay?
That's not very
No, but as part of me building the deck, I'm like, that has nothing to do with what I'm doing. Oh, they want
Twenty bucks a piece, put it in there.
Grab what they can, you know, reintroducing native species to the side of the lake, which is no longer there. I'm like, okay, you're gonna get me for that, 'cause I'm building it, okay, alright, we'll, we'll do it, no problem.
Alright. Take care.
Alright, guys.
Good night, eat. Have a good one. Alright, last on the agenda, before correspondence.
He really is a good contractor.
Well, that's good. Yeah, this is a, simply a situation of timing.
Yeah.
Open meeting law discussion, and the only discussion I have on the open meeting law is to inform everybody publicly that the open meeting law complaint filed against the planning board by Christine Bolduc has been adjudicated by the Attorney General, who has found no violation occurred by the Hubbardston Planning Board. End of story. Next.
Do we wanna read the footnotes or anything, or?
Nope, that, that was the, that's the decision. That's all we needed. We, we did not violate it.
Decision that can go online, okay?
It's online, it's in the town clerk's office.
They get it online at the AGO?
Yeah.
General, Attorney General's office?
Right. Okay, here it is, right in front of me. The one item that I have for correspondence, unless somebody's seen something else that I haven't. Is a very important item, so we need to Okay, so that's it.
What's the subject, Ben?
We're all set. The subject is the Streeter Road proposal. At the last, is it the last, maybe two select board meetings, maybe a month ago, the Streeter residents went before the s- town select board petitioning to have their road made public.
Right.
So we have now received a letter from Deb Reed
What's the date of that letter?
To the planning board, and it's dated August the thirtieth.
You know, they went before the select board last night.
Again? Okay.
But did you go to the meeting last night?
Yes, I did.
Oh.
I was unable to stay for the whole thing, so I don't feel qualified to even speak of it. Because I don't know how it ended, you know? But the, uh, the general thrust was, is a short-term plan and a long-term plan. Short-term plan is to make it survive this winter. And the long-term plan is do something more extensive, long-lasting and more involved. And, uh, so I, I, I don't know if this letter is current or obsolete, but let's go through it.
Well, it is a different proposal than what I heard at the select board, but it's more defined, so it may not be different, just more definition to it. Dear Planning Board members, I am writing on behalf of Streeter Road residents. As you may be aware, Streeter Road is a private way, and therefore each year we are required to bring our road up to a standard that the highway superintendent sets, so that we can get our road plowed during the winter season. The cost of these repairs from outside parties has become astronomical, with quotes received this year and last ranging from over eleven thousand to twenty thousand dollars. These prices are not practical nor sustainable for the homeowners. Historical town evidence will show that the cost for the town to provide similar repairs is a small fraction of these estimates. This year, under provisions of the Town of Hubbardston bylaws, we have applied for the town to provide temporary repairs to our road. We are asking for a simple grading, as had been performed by, for many decades, by the town, which kept Streeter Road in good repair. However, this is only a temporary fix. What we are really looking for is to have, what, I'm sorry, what we are really looking to have happen is for the town to take over our road, also allowed by the town bylaws. However, we are seeking the help of the planning board, as stated in the bylaws. Note, section two, acceptance of roads, streets, and ways. And I believe this is a reference to the general bylaw. Section two point one, no private street shall be accepted by the town as a public way, unless all of the following conditions have been met. The, number one, the way shall have a minimum pavement width of not less than twenty feet for its entire length. Such pavement composed of type one butemus concrete and base coat. Number two, the way shall be shown on a definitive plan endorsed by the planning board and shall be actually constructed in accordance with the specifications of the definitive plan approval. And three, the way shall have been completed in accordance with said definitive plan for a period of at least twelve months. In order to ensure that the way may withstand severe winter weather, during which time the developer shall remain responsible for all costs of maintenance, including but not limited to plowing of snow and ice and associated materials to provide adequate access and public safety. Notwithstanding the above, the town meeting may accept as a public way a way that does not meet all of the conditions set forth above upon a recommendation by the majority vote from the planning board to waive such conditions. It has been suggested by the select board and the acting town administrator that we will have to pay to bring the road up to subdivision standards or something short of that. However, the homeowners are looking for something much simpler. We would like our road to stay a dirt road, much as it is now. The general public uses our road as a cutoff between two public roads on a regular, daily basis. Should the road become paved, it would be even more of a raceway. We seek to have the road taken over by the town and maintained by simple grading and some occasional gravel, as may be needed. Exactly as it had been cared for by the town for decades. With all the road traffic our small real receives, this has become a matter of public safety. Note, for an instance, Halfrey Road is a public road and remains a dirt road with no subdivision upgrades. It is simply maintained by the town with a grader, and it certainly gets much less public traffic than Streeter Road does. Close paragraph. Uh, parentheses, I'm sorry. Any suggestions or help you may have for us will be much appreciated. We await your reply. Sincerely, Deb Reed. So essentially they're looking to get a gravel road that would be maintained by the town and approved as a public way. In which we have the ability to grant waivers to the special conditions that we have for public ways.
Does the town still have to vote to accept it?
Yes. We can, the process would be, they come before the planning board with a proposal to grant the waivers to their request. If the majority of the planning board agrees with them, grants the waiver to that request which, whichever it may be. I just read the, the conditions. I didn't read the waivers requesting. Uh, then they can go to, to town meeting and ask that the road be accepted for those conditions with those waivers.
Does this have to do anything with their betterment assessment that they would have to pay?
Well, I don't know, because, you know, there are a variety of ways it could be handled. I don't know who's gonna be doing the upgrades. This is what we'll have to do, is have them in, explain everything to us.
I think if the town, if they, I think what she's asking for is that the, the, the planning board approve them just keeping it as a dirt road. So there wouldn't really be any betterment improvement costs, because they're not gonna bring it up to standards. If they were gonna bring it up to the road standards, that's where the betterment come in. They're ask, what they're asking us for is a, is a waiver, so they don't have to do that. So it's
This would be the cheapest and easiest way out for the homeowners. Because if the, if they had to have the standards of a private way, then that would be an expensive proposition. How long is it? About three quarters of a mile, Craig?
I thought she said it was a mile.
I would say, yeah.
She said it was a mile. Debbie said it was a mile that night, yeah.
Alright.
They're talking some serious money to
Yeah, you're talking some serious money to do the the way as required under the bylaw.
That the subdivision
Right.
Subdivision rules, right?
And that would mean, and it's also in the general bylaw. It all, would mean therefore that if they did it the way it's provided for in the bylaws and it cost a million dollars, the homeowners on that road would take the million. Town would pay for it, and then the homeowners would be assessed a betterment tax over twenty years for the, paying back the cost of that road.
Does anyone know how long that's been, road has been in, in existence? 'Cause it's been there since I've lived in town, which is forty-five.
Well, we can find it. I have the, I have the list of that. I can tell you exactly what I, but I don't have the file with me.
Let me just say that it's more complicated than this.
Oh, it is?
From, well, maybe I only heard the complications, but, uh, if I had stayed at the meeting throughout, perhaps some of these complications went away. But, um, Brian Bullock was concerned with, um, town equipment and personnel working on a private road. 'Cause it sets a precedent and, and also there's a liability. I think, I think that's what he was saying. Then citizens mentioned a bond that the town took, and they're wondering about the status of the bond.
What bond? The what?
The, when the street was originally built, apparent, someone reported that, and I don't know that this is true. But I, I wanna just mention a couple of things, so that it's, it's a little more complicated than this letter was for. And I'm not negative towards it. I just wanted to make sure we know what we, we know. Um, apparently there was a bond when the, when the road was originally developed. And, um, there are some, some citizens were wondering where that bond went, how did it get spent, what happened to it? Um, and then there was a, uh, a question about whether the uh, what, what is the definition of a private road? Does this fall into that category? And then if it becomes a town road, I believe someone mentioned that it had to do, uh, it had to do with taking, because some of these property lines go to the center of the road. And I don't know that that's uncommon, but I think you take an easement, you don't take the property.
Yeah, the, the homeowner gives the easement across the stretch of road.
But what, what, what everyone was saying was, you know, there's the short-term, get you through the winter kinda solution. And that might be running greater up and down it. Uh, and then there's the longer-term solution. Does it ultimately end up being upgraded in some way? And, um, uh, of course, it's more expensive and, but it would last longer, et cetera. And um, uh, of course it's more expensive and, but it would last longer, et cetera. So, that's what I think I heard last night, and I might not be reporting it perfectly.
The town, I know at the last meeting, the town was gonna give them a price for upgrading, uh, for wood repairing.
They presented some money, and I didn't get the handout, but that's okay. But it was significant enough to make people balk at spending a lot of money for a short-term solution. There's also a basic problem in that, if it is a private way, they don't have any way to regulate the traffic on it. Or they perceive themselves as not having any way to regulate the traffic on it, and a lot of big trucks can just beat the road up. And it's not residents, you know, they're driving cars and SUVs, but through traffic was beating the road up. And um, there might be some way to dampen that down. Like Elm Street is a cutoff and there's a, you know, commercial vehicles prohibited.
Trucks a lot, yeah.
Well, it's two and a half tons or something, but also, uh, you can, you can still deliver your oil, you know? But it's, it's the through traffic that is of concern. So um, and then the other thing was that they did mention the, if you upgrade it too much, then it becomes a roadway. You know, people are speeding through, they're already going too fast with two bigger trucks, but it would just get worse, so.
Well, I, I would suggest that. Boy, I hope they're not trying to, I, I have to do a little bit more research on that and what we can do, but let's invite them in for October.
I, I don't wanna speak for them, I just want, I just want to say that there are some complications.
Well. I believe uh, don't exactly quote me, but I think they just voted to send the grader down there for this winter. To smooth it out the best they can.
Did they?
You know, so it, it, to be a winter worthy.
Good.
So then they.
I didn't stay for that, I, I had to leave.
The town vote, the, the town plows it. They voted to.
No, they sub, they sub.
We sub it out, but, yeah, I mean, in essence, we, yeah, we pay the subcontractor.
Yeah.
But the town can only plow it as well as the road condition.
Yeah, I know, but we already have the expense of plowing it, so it's really.
They wanna get it into a, as you call it, a plow condi- a plowable condition.
Right, it's like they did up at Malone Road, I mean, if they did that to that road.
Well, Malone is a, is a town road though.
I, I'm not, I'm not saying that, if they brought it up to the conditions of Malone Road, that would, and that would cost fifty thousand dollars or something to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how that works, yes, I mean, somebody did build a house, it is a town road.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm only, I'm only talking about the condition.
Yeah.
If they, if that's acceptable as a condition to the town as a town road, which it, it's always been a town road.
Yeah, right.
But they brought it up to that condition.
Yeah.
To service that house.
Yeah.
That is the, that, that, if, if they brought that road up to that condition, that standard is a reasonable standard. This, I'm just, that's a question.
But yeah, a lot of, a lot of material went on that road also.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Yeah, a lot of material. Well, before we get involved in the whole thing, what we need to do is we need to meet with the folks and get the specifics. Um, it's true, I mean, what they say here is we can vote to waive these conditions. Which would then allow them to go to town meeting and uh, request for the town to be accepted as a public way. Under the terms of whatever they may be, you know, graded or gravelled or.
We can set the conditions, okay, we, would we set the conditions, that was, that's maybe a question.
Well, the conditions are set. There's four or five conditions that need to be set before a street can be accepted by the town as a public way. However, those conditions can be waived by a majority vote of the planning board.
But we can set other condi- you know, we'll, we'll waive those conditions if you do this.
I don't know.
That, that was my question, yeah.
I guess we're gonna have to read more, I don't know that.
I think we need to uh, discuss this, this with the selectmen as well. I mean, certainly to hear the citizens. I, I didn't hear the citizens speaking with one voice as to what they really wanted. And I didn't hear, cause I left early, any kind of selectman-directed activity. Now, there might have been, I'd have to go home and listen to the tape or just talk to them.
Well, I was at the first meeting that they came in, and they, and they asked me my opinion of it, in fact. And I told them that I was in favor of anything that was gonna upgrade the infrastructure of this town. And therefore increase property values of the citizens, which this would do. Um, I did not comment on the proposal that they're mentioning here, which would be a gravel road, I, this is the first I've heard of it too. Um, so I don't know, they said that they had fifty out of fifty-one people in support of this proposal. And, I mean, there's some, there's some hoops they have to jump through, but I think the majority. Of the hoops are right here, based on if we say no to the proposal. Then they have to do the four conditions.
The official road.
Official road.
And when you, and you, when you have an unofficial road, um, some of, I think, I believe some of the citizens saw a benefit to that. In other words, they didn't want a highway, they wanted a unofficial road, and uh, but what that does is it moves. What I'll call investment cost to operating cost. Every year, you're back in there doing something. That's what it does for the town, in other words, the town takes over.
Yeah, but, is the road, yeah, but they're talking about grading it. I mean, how mo- how often do they gra- grade the roads, I mean?
Usually twice a year, spring and fall.
Do they do Mount Jeff, that dirt road up there, is that graded every?
Travis, Travis said the same thing.
Yeah, Halfrey Road is graded.
I mean, I, you can dig up High Street and make that a dirt road, I'd be happy with that. Probably be smoother.
Lot of people have had, said that, you know, the roads are in such bad condition, flag road.
Fair amount of dust issues, um, you know.
Ride my horse on it.
It was.
But to be fair to these people, there's fifty odd houses there, they pay the actors just like everyone else.
Well, that was a major point, sure.
Yeah, I mean, they, oh, go ahead. No, go ahead.
My only concern is that they bought their houses knowing the road's private, and there's so many more roads in town that. Could use this money that we're gonna be, the town's gonna be spending on fixing a private road. It shows, I don't know, I just have major problems with it.
No, no, but it wouldn't be spent, Craig, unless the town accepts it as a public way.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's their, that's their request is to us, the planning board. Waive the requirements, so that they can present the proposal to town meeting to have it accepted as a public way. If it's accepted as a public way, then it falls into the same category as those other town, streets you're talking about.
Yeah, right.
Right now, we, we have accepted the state law. That allows the town to plow private roads and to maintain them somewhat, based on what the. Um, liability that gets relieved by the homeowners and, you know, that's.
That law was mentioned, I didn't know what, what it was about.
It was accepted, it came up, I'm saying ten or twelve years ago, maybe longer. When we had some people coming in looking to have Dogwood Road North and South and Jordy Road accepted. And one gentleman wanted his private driveway plowed, uh, there were, there were a variety of items. And we, the town accepted the state law, and you can read that state law, which says, these are the conditions. If you, the town accepts these, then you can plow a private road.
That was all done around Streeter Road as well, that was.
Streeter Road perhaps.
Was one of those, I remember that, I remember the meeting, yeah.
Um, we've done that, and we've maintained it, and I don't have the details on what it really costs, as they're saying eleven to twenty thousand. I don't understand that, but that's okay, and, you know, we get them in here, we explain it all, and we go through the process. I don't know what their plans are.
Craig, you got a good point though, you know, they bought it as a private road, but by the same token, would their property values increase? Or is it gonna change if it's a private road or?
In, in my opinion, if it was a paved, accepted road, then values would be enhanced. If it stays as a gravel road, I don't know, that, I don't know if the values would be enhanced enough to re-. For the town to receive any more real estate value out of that, in the, in the form of property assessment and taxes. But, that's, you know. It certainly would be better than it is now, because it's, it's a pretty tough place down there, that's a tough road.
Do they get that much traffic? I, I didn't, I'd have a really good.
Uh, I just, I threw the whole statement out, because I mean, I live off Halfrey and, I mean, I couldn't, I mean. Unless she sits on Halfrey, how can she make that comparison, you know, that, how many, how many cars come down each road? I mean, a lot of cars do come down Halfrey Road, believe it or not, and my neighbor complains about it all the time. She complains how fast they drive too, so.
Why would someone go down Halfrey Road?
I don't know.
I get down there just to be nosy sometimes.
I saw a lot of houses on Halfrey Road.
Yeah, I used to drive, I like to drive around the different roads.
Well, well, she's only using the Halfrey Road analogy to, to show that there is a public road in town that is only dirt.
There's quite a few.
I see, there's quite a few roads.
Mount Jeff and uh, Mile Road, is it?
Yeah, Mile Road is.
There, there's quite a few.
Mile Malone.
Halfrey, yep.
A Fertie Lane.
Fertie Lane, where's that?
Fertie, where's that?
That's off of Route Road, I believe. Oh, not Route Road, um.
Self Ridge.
Oh, that's true, yeah, that's, that's really short though, that's only a few hundred feet, yeah. That goes down to Curtis's place, it's all dirt road now. So we're gonna ask them to come into our meeting if they want?
As well, that's the only thing we can do, let them explain everything.
I think we need to understand what the selectmen did. I have to respect their perspective on this.
Well, we can send them a letter, asking them to update us on it, so we, you know, the people come in and either the selectmen come in and explain this, either they send us a letter to explain this.
Are the selectmen in favor, or they, have they said?
Well, they're, they're sympathetic to the need, and uh, if, as you said.
I think they're working towards the goal of doing it, but trying to get like the legalities out of it.
Well, right now, there's, there's limited legalities, because it's a status is the private road. And the, the liability remains with the residents, and under the way it is right now, we can. Whatever little maintenance the town provides, but the town also can plow it. But they've seemed to have chosen a method of plowing that subcontracts that process out, I'm not familiar with it. However, uh, if it comes up to us for them to go to town meeting. If the town accepted it as a public way, then they would get all the same services that everybody else would, there wouldn't be any more liability, it'd be a public way.
The subcontracting is probably a way to isolate the cost.
Maybe.
And it wouldn't be isolatable or identifiable.
It's probably a good way for the town to indemnify itself against any liability.
Yeah, one step removed, yeah.
And I'm, I, it sounds to me like they.
Just don't have enough trucks.
Yeah, maybe they're.
Uh, I honestly don't know why they do it, cause two, the two roads that are subcontracted are on opposite ends with the town.
Yeah, Mile Road is subcontracted, but that makes sense, because it's not, they have to go out of town to do it.
But it's Mile Road and Streeter Road that they've been on, so I mean, you're driving.
Yeah.
You know, what, fifteen minutes each way.
Do we have any houses on Mile Road, is there?
Oh, yeah.
There's a bunch of them.
Have to drive down there.
Great spot, we gave up uh.
Either that or take the Google trip.
Just don't go straight through, I heard.
Why?
Uh, I heard it's really rough.
Oh, it's terrible, but.
And it's straight through to Templeton?
Yeah.
Yeah, or Felicity, I believe.
Felicity, it's a beautiful road, it's got beautiful, used to many years ago anyways. We used to ride up there.
We gave up that piece of land on Mile Road, swapped it for the land.
The scenes.
Scenes that I have, so. And that was the primary piece of land that was available for any wind farm development that we had. Cause of the elevation.
Alright.
So you see me uh, kind of sifting through here and getting ready.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Miller Teller?
Miller Teller.
Not at the pizza parlor, they don't serve.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, right.
All in favor?
Yes, sir.
Opposed?
Have supper now?
I don't know it.
Actually, I can't go, I can't go home for another hour, because.
You didn't have supper yet?